Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Gears. With regard to Mr. K. L.'s communication, I think his hope was that it might be read during the request to address council portion as maybe influence the discussion that will follow that. I think if it goes at the end, it will be sort of after the business that he's hoping to address. So I don't know if procedurally, I know sometimes you get online requests that you read during the request to address council. I don't know if we can give that the same treatment here.
We can if that is the intent, if people would like to have it read there as opposed to a communication.
I'm happy to amend my motion to change the amendment as stated.
All right. So we will consider Mr. Cantwell's request under the request to address council, and that will be read at that time. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to request to address council. So these are items that were not pertaining to ordinances or resolutions, and the first was Charlene Myers.
Good evening. I know it's been a while since I've been here. We had actually cooking classes for our guests at our other church in Finney Town that were happening on Tuesdays, so I wasn't able to come up, and they were provided by La Soup. So it was a great opportunity for our guests to learn about healthy cooking. But I'm here today, Pastor Domingo's here, I also see Bishop James, and just wanted to give a brief update about the cooling shelter. The cooling shelter served 200 guests approximately, I think it was like 275 meals because people were able to take meals home and all that good stuff. We had donations from La Soup, which was absolutely wonderful again. They were able to donate sandwiches for us, and then we were able to grill out. One other treat that our guests had was master provision for nonprofits. Don't all rush up there at once. Give steaks for 50 cents a pound, and we grilled steaks on the grill, thanks to some expert grilling that happened by Pastor Domingo's clergy, which was very nice. So I look forward to giving a more detailed report to the housing committee at some point so that I can kind of go over the numbers of both the warming shelter, the cooling shelter, the costs of both, and you know, how we can partner in the future and possibly extend days. We were only open in July because the weather like kind of just got cooler, and then it started to bounce. And what we found is when we bounce, it's too hard to recruit people. You know, like the first day we were open, zero. Second day we're open, 25, you know. So it's just we've got to kind of hit it just right, get the word out and all the things. So that's kind of what we found. Just some other things that are happening is we are continuing our meals at Christ the Savior Church, and they are the second Thursday, which happens to be two days from now, and I was trying to think of what day we're in, and also the fourth Sunday. We were going to expand our food pantry because Ashland Pantry was going to every other week, but now they have decided to go to every week, and so that's great. But we're still looking for ways to expand our food pantry because our guests are finding that some of the other pantries locally here are cutting back. And so we just want to make sure that we're providing for our guests and the needs of our guests. I think that's all I have to say like in a nutshell about the cooling shelter and the warming shelter, two minutes to spare. I don't know, Pastor Domingo, you wanted to say a few words?
Well, the warming shelter and the cooling shelter, they're essential, and we need them both. Earlier this year, a young man who would be at the warming shelter almost every day, they found him proven to death three blocks from the warming shelter. We don't know whether or not he had fallen and stayed in that position and nobody noticed him, but the fact is, he was there. And so we basically, we need support. We need support as a community, we need support. At the congregation, we're going to do everything that we can and that we might be able to help someone because when you look at Norwood, you don't necessarily see a neighborhood or city from the outside. It looks like it's prosperous, like everything doing fine, but then when you drive through sometimes in winter or in the summer, you see something you know, to the contrary. And so we plan on doing better and bigger with the coming season, and we pray that we can count City Council and everyone and everybody who has stepped on the ground in Norwood as a partner in this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request to address council is Dana Bowle.
Dana Bowle, 3947 Elsmere. I live three doors down from the church and the Cooling and Warming Center. In the past, we had a very cordial relationship with the Korean Methodist Church. We gave them trees, we would mulch them and take care of them. We had a great relationship with them. They would, you know, reciprocate, and I believe that that address is the wrong location for the Cooling and Warming Center, and here's why. I now, when I walk my dog at night, I've witnessed people trying to sleep in the stairwell off of Williams. I've called dispatch about it, they've sent somebody out. We've had people just hanging out on the brick wall in front of someone's house, and that lasted from 8:15 until 11:30 in the morning when I called, and we have never had this problem before. Now, I'm not sure why this is happening at our, at that location. It is near a school, and I'm not sure. I would love to know if the church is receiving compensation for hosting this. I think it's the wrong location. I want to be able to walk my dog at night without seeing this kind of thing, encountering people. I want to be able to walk my dog in the morning without encountering someone who thinks that the church is open all the time for them. So I'm against it. We've, I'm also have been curious why over the last two years, they come to council and they eat up council's time. Council is for ordinances and legislation, and I'm not sure why they are using this to promote their project. If you want to do something and I don't see impacts of it, that would be a little different, but that's not the case, and I just don't think it should be near the school either. So maybe Montgomery Road. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request to address council is Bishop Sonny James.
Good evening. I am excited, guys, because we've come such a long way as a community, we really have. We've come through some very difficult times. We've made it a point to address difficult topics, but tonight, I want to encourage all of us to look outside of ourselves. One of the things that I want to make sure that you council members understand, you have a responsibility to the people. When people come before you, it would be nice if you looked at them. I know you've got important things on your laptops. I know the White House is probably reaching out to you during public comment, but it's time now that we begin to honor people and give each other the respect that they deserve. Now, I'm not going to sit here and bash anybody, but all I can say is the old head or heads in Norwood have got to go away. This is a new day. This is a community that the rest of the country should be applauded. When you look at our systemic history, and I'm telling you guys, you ought to be celebrating the advancements of this community. Now, it doesn't mean we're always going to agree. Ask the mayor and I, we've come a long way, and a lot of it, Mayor, was because of me. James Bonzo. Lord knows we've come a long way, but some of it was because of me. I'm almost afraid to mention my brother on the end there. Lord knows we've come a long way, but I have to admit, some of it was because of me. What we can show people in this community is what community looks like. What we have an opportunity to do is to show people what God intends for us to look like, and that's a people that can, like any other family, all but the nays. There was a member here. The rest of us, we can fuss and argue and fight, but at the end of the day, come together. And so over the next few months, you're going to be hearing me doing our Come Together Rally. I just left Cory Bowman and his group, they're coming in town, and as they ushered me up to the front of the room, folk were like, well, what are you here for? And I told them, come together. It's not always about red or blue. It's about coming together to address the issues that hold us back as a people or a community. And I'm encouraging all of you, we've got some phenomenal folks here tonight. And folks, I know when you get to your part, some of you are going to be angry, some of you are going to be happy, but at the end of the day, we've got to come together. At the end of the day, we've got to respect each other's position, and so as you start hearing about our Come Together rallies, from the White House down, we're bringing people together from across the aisles. Tonight, you guys are going to hear me say some things that I know is going to upset some folk, but I want what's best for Norwood, and I want us to really be... that you're angry with in this room. It shouldn't take a major tragedy for us to be able to just say, hey, brother, what can I do to help you? My prayer is that we come together, we respect the residents, we respect each other, and tonight, we are going to address some things that are very difficult to talk about. But we can no longer be dumb as a box of rocks and just do stuff just because we do it. Let's come together. Let's learn to trust each other all over again. Bishop Sonny James, I love you guys. God bless you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. It is the ordinance approving a zoning change from Neighborhood Business District, NBD, to Neighborhood Business District Plan Unit Development, NBD, PUD, over the property known as 2741 Robertson Avenue, parcel 651-0030-0194. And we do have five requests to address council on this matter.
I'll give you a quick point of order. I got a text that the audio on the online version is not working. I just wanted to try to get that fixed if we could to be able to listen in. Don't mean to interrupt, sorry. This is the first time I've had a chat.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
So hopefully Steve can...
Yes, I did see Tyler come through earlier, so my assumption is he is aware and is in back working on that.
Thank you.
So the first item we will go ahead and have, the request to address council that was submitted online.
Tom Cantwell, 2032 Maple Avenue. Council members, although I cannot attend this meeting in person, I appreciate you taking the time to read my address regarding the Robertson Avenue Development and PLK Communities more broadly. Over the past month, I have been disappointed with how the Robertson Avenue PUD approval process has unfolded, while I do not live directly near that development at right today as both a concern citizen and resident of Maple Avenue where a future PLK project is also planned. Throughout the PUD process, numerous residents have raised legitimate concerns, yet whether intentional or not, it has appeared that council and the city administration have disregarded those concerns in favor of the developer. Citizens are questioned and challenged at every turn while the developers treat it as if their interests are automatically aligned with Norwood's. Let us not forget PLK is a business. It has demonstrated repeatedly that our city is primarily a vehicle for generating capital, not a community it wishes to fully integrate with. Cities are more than economic engines, they are homes, neighborhoods, and people. The Robertson Avenue Plan presented by PLK is substandard. I need not rehash every flaw here, those have already been articulated clearly by homeowners and residents in the area. What I will say is this, council now has an opportunity to tell PLK no. Norwood is worth developing, and we no longer need to beg developers to build here by giving away everything without demands. Yes, much of this new development and interest in Norwood can be contributed to PLK's continual investment, but there are many others that can be credited as well. I have lived, I have never lived in a community with so many active residents and leaders who pour time and treasure into making their home a better place to live. You have a responsibility not only to listen to residents, but to go to bat for them. Tonight, you have the chance to show that you stand with your constituents, not simply with the capital interest of business owners and landlords. You can build goodwill and strengthen trust by requiring PLK to do better. I urge you to vote no on the Robertson Avenue PUD readings tonight. Do not even advance this to a vote on the ordinance. Show us that you value our input and are willing to hold developers accountable. I then hope that PLK takes this no as a chance to come back to the table with something more suited for our community. I hope that PLK decides to become a benevolent partner in Norwood and does not just treat our city as a way to profit. I hope they will work with us for better Norwood for this generation and future generations. I hope that next time you can tell them yes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request to address council is Diane Farrell.
Hello. My name's Diane Farrell. I live at 2749 Robertson Avenue. I would ask you to vote no on Phase 3 South Robertson. I think it's too big. I think Robertson already has so many safety issues. It's been discussed many times how the bridge is an issue, the two lanes narrowing down into one. We now are going to have a left turn in front of the very spot that is a trouble spot. We have other entrances, exits on Robertson, and to add yet another one is only going to further compound the problems there. It really is a safety issue. I know we keep talking about we're going to do something, we're going to do something, but we really need to do something sooner rather than later. No, I don't think anyone has been hit by a car, but we have had several bad accidents there. Luckily, no one has been killed or maimed, but we did have a very serious accident. It's been a number of years ago, predated PLK, but there was a gentleman that was cut out by the jaws of life from a front yard of a property. The other issue with the development is I'm not clear that the fire chief has signed off on it. I've heard he's comfortable with it. I've heard that he's pretty good with it. I would like to hear that the fire chief thinks the plan in place is absolutely great, that his equipment can get back there, no problems, turn, do whatever it is they need to do if they need to go into that development. The other thing, and this is not specifically a Phase 3 issue, I would like to see things made a little more resident friendly. We've had the issue with the monitor before. For the people sitting back here that would like to see anything that's displayed, it's not up again tonight. Two weeks ago, not the last meeting, maybe it was longer than two weeks ago, when I came to get in, the door was locked. I couldn't get in. I had to stand downstairs and wait. And the other thing is the plans. I was under the understanding that I could see those plan in the clerk of council's office. I came today and spoke to the building department. They said they do not have the new plans for the downscale to the 45 units. I asked maybe the planning department would have those. No. So I understood the clerk of council would have them, so I walked upstairs, knocked on the door, the door was locked, no one's home. So I thought, well, before I get home, I'll give it one more try. I called, no one answered the phone, no one called me back. So I just would like to see things made a little more resident friendly for us, for when we need information, or we want to get in the building, or we'd like to see whatever it is that's going to be displayed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request to address council is Tony Boyle.
Thank you for this time. Real quick, will I have another opportunity while we do the readings of the ordinance to speak, or is this the only time for residents to speak?
This is it.
Okay. This is the city of Norwood, it is not the city of PLK. The residents of Norwood have entrusted you to protect us, abide by laws and regulations, and do what is best for this city, not what is best for PLK. Council has consistently failed to provide proper notice and has dismissed the concerns of residents. The current development design would effectively ruin the right to reasonable privacy and the right from nuance. I'm sure this PUD would have never made it this far if it was your homes that were impacted by this development. Unfortunately, our homes are, and mine specifically, would be surrounded on three sides by PLK's development. Just to note again, this meeting, there is a zoning change, there has been not, there has not been proper notice in the newspaper or proper notice mailed, so we're in violation of Ordinance 1117, Section 11, and Section 12. Throughout the Factory 52 development, council has provided preferential treatment to an outside developer at the expense of the current Norwood residents. This development effectively destroys the current Norwood community so that an outside developer can put their own community right on top of us for their benefit and their benefit only. Furthermore, this PUD does not follow the rules and regulations outlined in the Norwood codified ordinances, specifically Chapter 1155. Passing this development is a complete slap in the face to current Norwood residents, and it is not what is best for residents. This city is currently being sued by the school board regarding PLK's tax abatements, and council is now wanting to pass additional PLK plans that they know violate local, state, and Norwood ordinances. On top of that, approval conditions for both Phase 1 and Phase 2 still have not been met. There has been no updated traffic study. There has been no immediate improvements to Park Avenue and Forest Avenue. Just to go through, as I spent a lot of hours reading codified ordinance because I did not feel that the council would protect its residents, the current PUD submission is in violation of the following. Chapter 1117.11, Chapter 1117.12, Chapter 1155.01, Chapter 1155.05, Chapter 1155.08, Chapter 1155.15, Chapter 1155.11, Chapter 1155.13, specifically Sections 3, 4, C, 5, D1, D2, D3, E, Chapter 1155.14, Section A4, 1155.27. Just to give you an idea what some of those are, because I do not have time to explain all those. Proper notice to residents, intent, area density, lot regulations, max density, perimeter requirements, common space, gerrymandering, privacy in a residential PUD, preliminary plan submissions, preliminary plan approval in violation. I think the biggest ones to point out while I still have two minutes is a residential PUD is required to have 25% green space. Regardless if there's trees on 71, still up or down, that topography does not allow for, quote, physically suited, readily accessible, and available useful space. Regardless of whatever common space is at Factory 52, Phase 1 and Phase 2, quote, "Boundaries of any area shall not be gerrymandered to comply with density and open space acreage criteria." This is a separate PUD. On 11/6, we approved Phase 2 with the condition that an updated traffic study would be submitted. There has been no traffic study submitted since that approval. Again, the intersections for Phase 1 still have not been improved. There has not been a single traffic study since November of 2020 regarding beach, any intersections on Beach or Robertson Avenue. I think those would be pretty important streets to look at if we're looking at building a development in that block. It would increase the population density by more than 200%. A residential PUD, that population cannot exceed the permitted by more than 20%. In conclusion, there has been no consideration to traffic, infrastructure, safety, drainage. All of these have been hot topics for residents over the past six months, and nothing has been done about it. This is not in the best interest of the city. PLK and the city have failed to produce an accurate traffic study, for example, using 3,000 employees at Playing Cards Factory when they only had a maximum of 750 employees, not including any recreational traffic for pickleball, parks, concerts. Concerts, events, whatever you want to call it, no recreational included in there. PLK has failed to meet the requirements of the current traffic study. PLK has failed to meet approval amendments of Phase 2. The city has failed to provide residents proper notice. The PUD fails to meet the minimum requirements outlined in Norwood codified ordinance. Council failed to review design plans prior to hearing. PLK has failed to submit modified design plans. PLK has consistently failed to abide by sound ordinances with most days starting construction before 7:00 AM on many occasions.
Thank you. The next request to address council is Ann Gimbert.
My name is Ann Gimbert. I'm a resident of the city of Cincinnati, and I helped to collect signatures to repeal the zoning change by PLK Communities, and I support the Norwood residents against the predatory practices of PLK. The residents of Norwood deserve city officials who respond to their concerns that the developer, PLK Communities, is negligent in its responsibilities. Whether it's building driveways that are too short and cannot fully accommodate cars, or building streets that are too narrow for first responder trucks, or not providing adequate parking for events, or not conducting traffic studies to protect pedestrians, or protect pedestrians. Density, parking, traffic studies, these are the same issues that the residents of Cincinnati have been dealing with, and we have been dealing with the same smoke and mirror tactics of PLK. Please, listen to your residents. Peter Kleecamp and Nick Ligenfelter of PLK Communities are Indian Hill residents. Indian Hill has strict zoning laws to protect its residents from developers. Think the Green Belt of Indian Hill that protects its residents from unsightly developments and therefore, quote, "maintain the village's unique character," unquote. Or Loveland, where Nick Ligenfelter recently moved from, which also has comprehensive zoning laws with detailed regulations for land use and development. Think the downtown next to the Little Miami Bike Trail. Neither Indian Hill or Loveland would have any of these problems that the Norwood residents have voiced. Peter Kleecamp, the namesake of PLK Communities, sits on the board of the Cincinnati Country Day School, where the tuition is $33,540 a year, and two of his kids just graduated, which means he spent a little over $67,000 a year for school. The median income in Norwood is $38,233. Meanwhile, the Peter Kleecamp Family Foundation gave $70 million to the Xavier University, and yet Peter Kleecamp of PLK Communities is currently pursuing a 15-year tax reductions at Factory 52 at the expense of the Norwood City Schools. The Norwood Board of Education has filed a lawsuit against the city of Norwood. This developer is trying to write the new playbook for developers by developers to build luxury hotels, apartments, and homes, and not pay taxes to support public schools. Peter Kleecamp and Nick Ligenfelter are Indian Hill residents, the third richest zip code in Ohio and the 11th in the country. Kleecamp, Ligenfelter, and PLK Communities are not interested in the plight of the Norwood public schools and the gutting of the public school funding by state and federal budget cuts. Members of city council... funding by state and federal budget cuts. Members of City Council, who are your neighbors? Are they the people who live and go to school in Norwood? Or are your neighbors the wealthy developers who do not live in your city? Please, do not gild the Indian Hill lilies on the backs of the residents, the Norwood first responders, or the Norwood City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next request to address counsel is Ramon Tweedy.
Good evening, Councilor Mayor. My name is Ramon Tweedy, owner of Tweedy Burgers at the Gatherall Factory 52. Home or wrong, what are you going to say? But the Gatherall has been a blessing to me and my family. When I hear the word Gatherall, it was for all people, all races, and like a community to come together. And we all came together in that Gatherall, just the name of it, for us to come together as a group with different races to serve different food. And I just, it's hard to explain. I understand that people are mad at PLK, but at the same time that I can say it has changed my life, blessed me and my family, and it blessed a lot of other owners' families, from Asians to women, Latinos. And I just want to thank them for changing my life.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will consider... I'm sorry. Yours was with the other request to address counsel. You only submitted that one. Correct. I'll give you two minutes, Mr. James.
Let's get right to it, your thought.
Let me, don't start the clock yet. So I'm going to speak to the council members. There's no one that you have ever met in your life that is open to challenging. And I stand before you today, and I know this is going to probably surprise or upset a lot of people. But what I don't want to see us do is tell people that our city is broke, or our city is struggling financially. And then we fail to vote in such a way that puts our development team in a position where this isn't coming from the developer, this is coming from me. It puts them in a position where they have no other choice but to pursue justice by legal means. Those of you who have been here that study the processes and the policies and how things work in Norwood, this developer did not just come up with these ideas. He didn't just shoot from the cuff. He's come to before committees. He's presented his plans. And the committees have gone through their due process. So residents, I'm going to ask that you partner with me, and trust me, that I will be watching this development like white on rice. But tonight, we can no longer, as a municipality, we can no longer put those that we meet with on a regular basis in a position where all he can do at this point, if you say no, is to pursue his legal rights. We have people out here being shot. We have people out here really, really going through something. If you've got that much money, Law Department, come and work with me so we can help change some lives in this community. I'm asking all of you, I'm actually expecting you, to do what's in the best interest of this community and avoid frivolous lawsuits. And allow PLK to do the development that you all set in meetings and meetings and meetings. If there was going to be an issue, we should have brought this up before our committees. But I stayed up just nights ago till after 1:30 in the morning looking at some of these things. And just because I even had my attorney, one of my seven attorneys, look at it. He was like, Bishop, you guys got a mess on your hands. I'm asking you, let's work together. Let's come together. If this has to be the night where it's yea or nay, I'm asking you, allow PLK to do what we have walked them through. And I'm closing. I'm looking at each and every one of you council members, and I'm asking you, let's get this done together. And you have my word. They have my word. I will be watching everything they do like Hawkeye. And if anything comes up against the best interests of Norwood, you have my word. There will have so many preachers and so many leaders that it won't defend anything. So God bless you all, and let's do the right thing, Council. Let's allow PLK to do it.
Moving on to the agenda, the item we have for consideration for second readings of ordinances and resolutions. The first is an ordinance approving a zone change from Neighborhood Business District, NBD, to Neighborhood Business District Planned Unit Development, NBD-PUD, over the property known as 2741 Robertson Avenue, Parcel 651-0030-0194. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Hughes, just as a point of order, in case people might think that maybe they're not getting their chance to speak, can you clarify that there will be other slots, request to address counsel immediately?
There are no more requests to address counsel. That is everything that has been submitted. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
With regard to this ordinance, counsel, what is your preference? Mrs. Hoover.
I make a motion that we have the second and third reading of the ordinance.
You would like to suspend the rules?
Yes.
And have the second and third readings of the ordinance. Is there a second? Mrs. Bowling.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Mrs. Franzen.
I think that we should do these readings and then just vote it up or down so that everyone here can have clarity on what the next steps are for either the developer or the neighborhood. I think that that is the only fair way to make sure this is resolved tonight, in my opinion.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling.
Yeah, just to offer some clarity, we have a legal obligation to take action on this in one way or another today. So the reason that we're requesting the second and third reading is so that we can take action on it. That's not someone saying they want it to pass. They don't want it to pass, but we do have a legal obligation to act on it in some fashion this evening. We do have to have the second and third readings in order to act on that.
Mr. Moore.
Through the President, may I ask, Mr. Moore, if, my understanding is that the obligation that we have is to the preliminary approval of the plan, but not necessarily to these first two items with regard to having the second and third tonight?
Mr. Moore.
That's correct. There's a 60-day time limit on the preliminary plan. And there's no specific time limit in the code regarding zoning changes, which the first two ordinances are changing to the zoning. The third is the approving of the preliminary plan. There's no specific time limits on there, although if you wait too long, then, you know, it will be deemed as approved. But as far as the zoning goes, there's not a specific timeline, so having a second reading on those two and then moving on to the next. But if the plan ends up being approved either by vote of council or by default, because there's not enough votes to reject it, then the plan would be approved, but would not match the footprint of the PUD zone. And I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what the practical effect of that is.
Mr. Gerton.
I think it's important to clarify the difference between these three ordinances. This one that we're considering right now, to my understanding, and the Law Department or anybody else on Council can help correct me if I'm wrong, this specific ordinance is to connect, is not to connect, it's to change the Neighborhood Business District zoning of the one property that PLK has bought on Robertson, and change that from an NBD to an NBD-PUD, Planned Unit Development. If we don't do this, then PLK can do anything with that property within the NBD zoning without any kind of work on Planning Commission or Council. So to be very clear, I think this specific ordinance is a positive step, and I think it's very different from approving or denying the preliminary plans.
Mrs. Franzen.
Thank you, Mr. Gerton, for that clarification. I know even for us on Council, this is a thing that we have to be careful and be considerate of the fact that these three ordinances are not all, not every ordinance is the thing that people are most upset about. And I agree that I think that this ordinance is a net good for being able to make this development a part of the neighborhood. If that makes sense. Sorry.
Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just question through for the Law Department. Did I hear, did I understand that we do not have to have the first, the second, and third reading tonight? There's no rush for the second and third reading and declaring emergency? Is that what I heard from you, sir?
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the first two ordinances, the ones that changed the zoning of that parcel to PUD and then expand the PUD to include that parcel, the PUD district to include that parcel, no. But for the plan, which is really the issue today, that does need to be acted on, or it goes into effect by default. That has to be acted on tonight.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Moore.
Yes, thank you. For the Law Department, is it, my understanding is that any PUD needs to be 2.5 acres or above. And the consequences of that would be that if you vote to approve the first one to change the zoning, you would then sort of have to vote to add the parcel to the master PUD because a .1 acre PUD would essentially be invalid?
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. It would be illogical, even if it's not invalid, because it essentially says nobody can do anything on that property, on that house, without going through the PUD process, which would be really unfair to a homeowner or whoever happens to own the house, because it's a small lot. And so that would make, it would make no sense to not just make it a part of that district.
Got it. So there's not necessarily a logical path to a yes on the zoning change, but a no on the addition to the master PUD. It would either be yes to the change and yes to the addition, or no to the change and no to the addition.
Mr. Moore.
Honestly, I've never thought about it. I can't imagine doing one without the other.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Hoover, seconded by Mrs. Bowling, is to suspend the rules and have the second and third readings of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
No.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
With a vote of six in favor and one against, the motion does carry. Please have the second and third readings of the ordinance.
Ordinance approving a zone change from Neighborhood Business District, NBD, to Neighborhood Business District Planned Unit Development, NBD-PUD, over the property known as 2741 Robertson Avenue, Parcel 651-0030-0194. Ordinance approving a zone change from Neighborhood Business District, NBD, to Neighborhood Business District Planned Unit Development, NBD-PUD, over the property known as 2741 Robertson Avenue, Parcel 651-0030-0194.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling.
I suppose we have to have a motion before we can discuss.
That is correct.
I'm going to rescind my hand up in that case.
Whatever.
Mrs. Franzen.
I move that we approve this ordinance.
To pass the ordinance?
To, we pass this ordinance, yes.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to pass the ordinance. Is there a second? Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion?
Yep.
Mrs. Franzen.
So sorry, I jumped the gun. My apologies. Like Mr. Gerton said, I think that this is a net positive. It's not the thing that people have the most issues with. That would be the, well, it's the second reading on here, or second ordinance on here, the third on the other. So from my understanding and from what I felt, I thought that this was a neutral-to-good change.
Mrs. Bowling.
For the Law Director, if this were not passed, can you give an example of the types of things that could be done to this property under its existing zone?
Mr. Moore.
I'll be honest, off the top of my head, I don't really know. There's, you know, you subject to the setbacks and the density requirements in Neighborhood Business District could be replaced with another building. I would assume, although I've not checked, but I would assume that they would have the ability to tear it down. That seems within the realm of possibility and could probably pave the whole thing. But as far as I know, that would be allowed, which is what they're planning to do. So they could replace it with a different kind of building, you know, commercial or residential. But I couldn't tell you, I couldn't give you a complete list of all the possibilities.
Thank you.
Mr. Gerton.
Just for clarity's sake, I would have voted yes on the second reading of this ordinance, not on, I don't feel appropriate to vote on the second and third reading at the same time.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Franzen, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Gerton?
No.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
By a motion of 5 to 2, this motion does carry. Moving on to next item. This is an ordinance approving the expansion of the Planned Unit Development, PUD, plan area, south of Robertson Avenue, known as 4500 Beach, Parcel 651-0030-0206, referred to as Robertson South, to include the property known as 2741 Robertson Avenue, Parcel 651-0030-0194. What is your pleasure on this one? Mrs. Hoover.
I make a motion that we suspend the rules and have the second and third reading.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to suspend the rules and have the second and third readings of this ordinance. Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
I did just want to say for the record that this has been perhaps the most unfun process that I've... And it really breaks my heart that a beautiful old home is essentially getting made into a driveway. And through my lens, as a resident and a neighbor, that makes me very sad. I know in my conversations with our community development, that from a city planning standpoint, one house is not something to have feelings about, that they'll be replacing it with others. So, but I did want to say that I understand that the Planning Commission requested that they have an entrance and an exit, and that this was the result of that request, that PLK did purchase this home with the intent of making it an egress. So in my world, this wouldn't have to happen, but the house has been purchased, sold and purchased. And I just want to say that I am disappointed that we are going to be losing. We can't replace, it's a 100-year-old home, and we won't be able to replace that. Just want to share that.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen.
My opinion is this is similar to the previous one. I think this is a net good. Though I can see doing only one reading tonight, my feeling is just I want to... My feeling is just I want to get this done. I want to have it all complete for both the developer and the people who have given their time and their care so that they don't have to think about another council meeting, frankly.
Thank you. Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can somebody just clarify for myself and for people that are watching exactly what this ordinance entails and exactly what we're voting on for this ordinance, please? Just a brief summary. Anyone?
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance you just passed, and assuming it's going to be signed by the mayor, has changed the zoning for this parcel to Neighborhood Business District Planned Unit Development. And the idea here is to add that parcel into the PUD district that sits right behind it, to make it all one district, one PUD district.
Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, okay, I appreciate that clarification. I kind of understood that. I just wanted to get it spoken by someone else other than me. So a wise man, when I started out, you know, I do a little real estate myself, and someone in this room, a matter of fact, wise person, told me once when I was contemplating houses, and he said, "It's just a house." "You realize it's just a house?" Because I was trying to... I was trying to weigh... You know, I grew up in this house, and it's so important, and it's more than money, and it's just a house, he's told me. It's just a house. So... And that made sense to me. On the other hand, it doesn't really weigh here, because we're talking about other homes that are involved here. These homes that are sitting here, and they've been sitting there for years and years, and families have raised their family. And now they're getting... They've watched this development in front of them, and it's creeping in behind them, and they're going to tear the house down. Now they're going to have it on the sides of them, and on the back of them, and on the front of them. So as much as I love what's going on over there, PLK has been such a great developer for us, and I am so excited about the whole thing, and I love every minute of it, and I'm a supporter of PLK, and I just... I'm a supporter of development here in Norwood, and I'm very impressed of what's going on, very impressed. But we're elected by people in this community to vote for us, and if they're unhappy, and they have... I've put myself in that situation. Are you going to be happy when that happens to your home in front of you? And, you know, the Indian Hill thing kind of really weighed a lot. These people are dealing with this in front of them, behind them, now on the side of them. Man, we have got to realize that these people are bleeding for help here, so that's kind of where I'm at. I love PLK. I love everything that's going on, but these people are asking us for help. They've elected us. We really should think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling.
Mr. Moore, please correct me if I'm wrong, but there is absolutely nothing stopping PLK from tearing that house down tomorrow, whether we approve this PUD or not?
Mr. Moore.
I don't believe there's anything that prevents them. Now that it's zoned PUD, I don't know if they would need to get approval from the Planning Commission for that, but I'm guessing not. They could get a demo permit and tear it down.
So that's not me saying that I want the house torn down. I am not a person who's ever felt like a house is just a house. Me buying my house is one of the highlights of my life and a thing I never thought I was going to accomplish, and it... A 100-year-old house means a lot to me, and the history and the character I value a lot. I do not love the idea of this home being torn down, but I want to make the point that how we vote on this specific issue is not us saving or not saving that home. PLK owns that home right now, and if they wanted to tear it down right now, they absolutely could. This PUD has no impact on their ability to demolish that home, just to make that point clear.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I think for me, the... Part of why I voted, because I understand the angle on if it's PUD for the individual property, then that in theory might give us some more protection. I think that that, as Mr. Moore sort of agreed with, that sort of necessitates that you pass this so that it is then added to the master PUD. And I think for me, where I ultimately landed is that it feels like to combine them and make it a sort of master PUD parcel feels like a step of inevitability towards something coming up through the middle of Robertson next to Mr. Boyle's home. And to me, that's what I wanted to avoid. And so that was why, you know, again, once that master PUD comes up and has Robertson access, I think it's just that much harder to reverse that effect. And so for me, like, that was why I voted no. Like, I'm similarly not interested in combining 2741 with the master PUD. To Mr. Moore's point, maybe there's some sort of negating because you can have a .1 PUD. You know, if this one were to fail, but my intention on this one is similarly to vote no, even if the vote we just did... Does it make sense to have a yes and a no? To me, I'm still interested in voting no here.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Hoover, seconded by Ms. Royce, is to suspend the rules and hear the second and third readings of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
No.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
A vote of six to one, the motion carries. Please have the second and third readings of the ordinance.
Ordinance approving the expansion of the Planned Unit Development (PUD) plan area south of Robertson Avenue, known as 4500 Beach, parcel 651-0030-0206, referred to as Robertson South, to include the property known as 2741 Robertson Avenue, parcel 651-0030-0194. Ordinance approving the expansion of the Planned Unit Development (PUD) plan area south of Robertson Avenue, known as 4500 Beach, parcel 651-0030-0206, referred to as Robertson South, to include the property known as 2741 Robertson Avenue, parcel 651-0030-0194.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen.
Will we approve this ordinance?
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to pass the ordinance. Is there a second? Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
No.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Gertin?
No.
Mr. Braden?
No.
By a vote of three in favor, four against, that motion follows. Moving on to the next item. That is an ordinance approving the preliminary planned unit development (PUD) plan as modified for the property south of Robertson Avenue, known as 4500 Beach, parcels 651-0030-0206 and 651-0030-0194, referred to as Robertson South. What is your... Mrs. Hoover.
I make a motion that we suspend the rules and have the two readings.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to suspend the rules and have the second and third readings of this ordinance. Mrs. Bowling?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Mrs. Franzen.
So, like, for me, I first want to say thank you to everyone that has come out and given their time and their testimony, emails, your voices. I hear them, and I'm pretty sure that everyone else on council hears them. I've had a lot of time, thankfully, to think about this. I've had two weeks... Well, more than that, let's be honest. I've seen plans for quite a while, and I really... I want to get this... I want to get this through the legislative process so that I get paid to be here. You guys don't get paid to be here. I want to make sure that you know that there's not another hearing or another council meeting, at least not any time in the future. So that's why I feel that we should have both readings tonight. As far as my vote goes, though, like, I want to have the readings. Yay, great. I struggle with this a lot, because I am pro-development. I like having more density, but I hear what you guys are saying, and I do think there's... It can be scaled back. Like, I don't think as it is is something that I would feel comfortable approving. So that is my feeling. I want to vote to get this into... Out of our council chambers, and I want to vote to deny it. I guess that would be something Keith has separate ordinances for approving versus denying. So that is my feeling, but I just wanted to explain kind of why I might be voting for the readings but voting against actually approving it. I do this... It is a complicated process. I feel that people who are not here every night, they may not understand, and I want them to know that I am... I do feel their pain and their pleas, so I just want them to know that. Please.
Thank you. Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things. Do we have to declare emergency on the second, third reading, or no?
We suspended the rules to have the second and third readings, but no emergency.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I lost my train of thought. Sorry. Something else. Mr. Moore.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Similar to Ms. Franzen, I want to just say thank you to everybody that came out tonight and has come out to the past meetings. It seems like... It was yesterday, but it was actually five years ago that I was in your shoes, coming and like passionately speaking about how stupid I thought moving the car dealership next to Wason Way was, and I was just like praying to God that somebody would hear me. And so I hear you, okay? Just want to say that. You know, I think something that Bishop James said that night that I... Sticks with me is, you know, to have empathy, you know, for developers in the sense of, you know, you all have put a lot of time and a lot of money into getting us to this point. I do think that the fact of the matter is that we still have a lot more business to do, you know, as a community, you know, with PLK, and I'm very interested in taking a look at just like why are processes like this? Because I don't understand how you all could basically be on the hook for a year now, right, before even coming to this moment. And so in a way that I didn't have much empathy for the Josephs that night, especially after they came up to me after the fact, I just want to say that, you know, I do empathize with the amount of effort and whatnot that has gone into it. But that said, you know, I think for me, looking at the plan, and I'm grateful to have time to do that, I think if it were one thing, you know, if it was just like, oh, if they would just make this thing a little bit different, you know, then I would feel better. But I think it's like, when I add up the sequence of things that, to me, just like, just kind of make me go like, eh, just like, don't feel great about that. You know, it's not just one, it's several of them, and in the aggregate, I don't think the net effect is something that I want here in the community, and certainly you heard a lot of people tonight say that they don't want it either. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Gertin.
I wrote down my comments tonight so I could focus on saying the right thing. So I'd like to read my statement, which is, "The issue we are addressing tonight has been on my radar for almost a year now. I have been listening to residents of my ward voice their concern over this proposal, which represents a significant change to their neighborhood. As such, it is my duty to represent their questions and apprehensions on this council. Based on the feedback from my constituents and other residents across Norwood, I oppose these preliminary plans that we are voting on tonight. These plans demonstrate a development that is far too large to be considered in this block and in its neighborhood. Residents I have spoken with understand that some development of this plot is inevitable and is PLK's right to build on this property. It is our duty as council, though, to approve reasonable plans that protect the quality of life for our residents. I propose that a development compromising 20 townhomes is a more reasonable and sustainable option for this neighborhood. The current plans involve an increase in density of 200%, whereas a development of 20 townhomes would grow this block to match the density of the adjacent blocks. There are areas of Norwood that are more appropriate for such dense development, and this is not one of them. Among other concerns about the preliminary plans that we are considering is the significant issue of parking and traffic. First of all, some of the townhomes are only 18 feet wide. These include a garage that developers propose will hold two cars. Yes, two cars could fit inside these dimensions, but it is reasonable to expect some residents to have trouble and park in exterior spots. The problem is that the plans only include 19 exterior spots on the entire lot. Beach Street will have the significant challenges handling this overflow. Secondly, Beach Street was not designed to handle this proposed density. Residents have already experienced a substantial increase in traffic from Phase 1 to Factory 52, not to mention what Phase 2 will bring. Beach Street has become a thoroughfare for traffic from 71 to Factory 52. There are no plans to address the added strain that the proposed plans will bring to this neighborhood. We simply cannot responsibly vote for this proposal when it will cause more harm than good to the neighborhood. Council has demonstrated a willingness to work with PLK in their interest in the city. Council has also voted for other dense developments in appropriate parts of our city. On the other hand, council has also denied other developments like the VW dealership on Wason Way when it was deemed against the city's best interest. There are positive ways to densely develop Norwood responsibility... I would cite the Ventura's Allison Street project as an example of what is more responsible than the preliminary plans that we are considering tonight. The preliminary plans that we are voting on tonight, simply put, are far too big to protect the quality of life in this section of our city. PLK's development of Factory 52 and its Phase 2 site has been a significant transformation of this area, bringing new life to a site that had desperately needed it. There are many ways that PLK has helped improve Norwood in the big picture, and for that, I am grateful. The question at hand is whether the phase of their development, or this phase of their development, is good for the city. As democratically elected officials of this council, we should consider whether this benefits the city and its residents as much as it will benefit PLK. I assert there is unequal benefit, and it comes at the cost of our residents. It is our duty to vote no on the current issue. I encourage PLK to come back with plans that are responsible and reasonable for the block and the neighborhood. We can work with them to ensure that this development is just as good for our residents as it is good for PLK."
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
I have a couple of questions for the... Sorry, Law Director. My understanding, we spoke a couple of times, which I appreciate, about conditions for approval, and I really appreciate what you had to say, Mr. Gertin, Councilman Gertin, regarding the number. I think every single person I've heard from across the board feels like 45 townhomes is too many. I can appreciate that. I don't know what a right number is. I am feeling frustrated that the information that we got from the Planning Commission, who in my estimation are the experts, said that this plan is appropriate. So that does mean to me, just to sort of respond to some folks who spoke earlier, that this is deemed safe, that it's... So some of the concerns that were being voiced, I'm not sure are accurate, but the sense of the density is more of what we feel is the right fit for our neighborhood. And so sort of a question is, how do we decide what that correct number is for our residents with the understanding that it is zoned for much more than the 45? So my question is, maybe that wasn't clear, but if we were to request a change in the number, can that be something under a condition for approval?
Mr. Moore.
As far as adding it to an ordinance approving this subject to a condition, I don't think you could make a... It's a condition. We've approved the plan, but only half the plan. I don't think that's really an option procedurally it's available. I will say that there's two members of the Planning Commission here, that if you have questions, we have the Planning Directors here as well, you know, the people that were involved in approving the preliminary, in the back and forth with PLK before the approval of the preliminary plan. And so, you know, they would have more insight in what happened at those phases of this project.
Thank you.
Send it back. Plan. Be the conditions of Phase 2?
I'm sorry. I don't want to kick anybody out of council chambers, but you all have had your opportunity to speak, so that I ask you respect the legislative process and allow us to...
to speak, so that I ask you respect the legislative process and allow us to conduct the business here. Mrs. Franson.
So I had a question, basically, for Mr. Gertner and Mr. Moore through the chair. So I think we are on the same side when it comes to not wanting to let this go through. I didn't know, and maybe this is even more of a question for the other Mr. Moore, frankly, how procedurally, let's say we all want to vote no, or a majority are voting no, if we do the two readings tonight and then vote it down, do we then have to do a denial ordinance?
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes. You want to add an ordinance, no ordinance denying approval of the plan, or not approving, I forget the language, and then suspend the rules and have all three readings and pass it tonight? That would be the process.
If council would be opposed. Yeah. Mrs. Franson.
Thank you. My question to Mr. Gertner and Mr. Moore, then, I know that procedurally, having both readings tonight can be something that I agree is not usually the best way, but my feeling was just to get clarity for everyone, I would like to try to get it through today and vote yes or no. I didn't know how you guys felt about that, because I didn't want to have to vote on the second and third readings and then have it voted down and have to do the, it seemed like a lot. So I just wanted to ask through the chair if they would be amenable of that.
Mr. Moore.
Yes. And I'm going to respond to that through the chair, the law department. Mr. Moore, my understanding, no relation, by the way, Mr. Moore, your comment, I believe, is that if we don't take any action on this within the 60-day window, which PLK has since granted us an extension for additional consideration time, that basically, if we were to not act at all tonight, the window to vote would expire, and in expiring, it would, the preliminary plan would be approved by default. Is that correct?
Mr. Moore.
That's correct.
So, in that case, like, my intention is to not let this expire and, by default, approve the preliminary plan. That is not what I want to have happen, so I would certainly welcome a second and third reading tonight.
Mrs. Franson.
Thank you. And thank you for that clarity. I, that is kind of my wonder about, like, the fail state. If we are in gridlock and it doesn't get hearings, what happens? So that's good to know what the stakes are. I would also, I would actually, I wanted to ask you before, and I didn't get a chance, I'd love to hear from you, Mr. Mayor. I know you've been a part of this process, and you've been a big driver of development in the city. So I would love to hear your opinion on this process. And this, or on the, on this development.
Well, and as a member of the Planning Commission.
Yes.
You know, as we went through, and you guys have talked multiple times about how many meetings there have been, how much discussion takes place before it even gets to this level, how much discussion and how much vetting is done. There's also numerous amounts of times where the developers come, and not just, not just, you know, the Factory 52 group and PLK, but any developers coming to the city looking for guidance. And the guidance comes from the Building Department, from the Chief Building, official plans office. So there's a lot of guidance put into this. Now, I haven't seen it get to this point in my tenure. I know that we've had different challenges, but I, it reminds me of the Indian Mount high-rise that was something that was going on years ago on Indian Mount, where the church is, they wanted to put a high-rise in, and that was stopped by council. And there was a lot of, there was a lot of activists involved in that, at that time. There was a lot of discussion when there was a beer distributor wanted to go in over on Beach Avenue, taking on a large portion, and it came to council, and council did not approve it. And then it reverted back to the regular use, and that's why we have rumpie sanitary, we have the port-a-tet systems all going out of here and those trucks. So it's interesting as these things go down. We've got a lot of, the Allison site was mentioned, and the quality insight is going on. And then there's infill projects. If you look at the infill, or the project right across the street from the Williams Avenue School, and renting those storefronts in front, how do they do that without the parking? Because we've restricted, we've taken away, we've taken away rights for the person who owns that building to even get businesses in there. It's become much more of a challenge than it was ever before. So, and then we also, you guys also scraped on, oh, but these houses are so beautiful. And I love my house, it's 115 years old. But my house is 115 years old. And some of these houses, I've walked on their porches, and they're about falling down around you, and they probably do need, and we've seen some of them in our community be torn down and rebuilt, and something that's much more beautiful, and much more efficient, and works. So I think that's, there's a lot to be said for this process. And when you say, it's, we talk about the process, it's not just come to a city council meeting, and you get it approved and it moves on through. The PLK group's been working on this for a year and a half, and they've invested a considerable amount of money, it was 200, probably $200,000, in just putting together plans and all the engineering and all the meetings and all the different stuff. That doesn't include the purchase of the property. So I think it would be, it would be wrong for us to proceed too much further than this without letting maybe Nick Lingenfelter talk a little bit about what, and what he sees as the path forward before a decision is made that takes a step, and I know the Law Director will always say, well, you know, if they sue us, I'll work for free, we'll just, you know, protect the city. But we never really want, we never really want lawsuits. And we don't want them, you know, we didn't, we've never wanted a lawsuit. We want to try to work these things out, be diplomatic, tactful, and move forward, take a path to that's good for the community. So, and I would respectfully ask that council provides Mr. Lingenfelter a minute to talk, knowing what he knows now from this meeting and has the ability to discuss.
Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no issues with hearing Mr. Lingenfelter speak tonight. I do have a few comments. I'm just, sometimes it's, it's hard to figure out exactly what's in our purview and what isn't. You know, I remember a couple of months ago, we voted an issue down. I wish I could remember what it was. It's, it doesn't, but then the next day, I got a phone call that said, "We really didn't need your vote, we passed it anyway." So, does anybody remember that? So, like, if, and I can respect what Mr. Moore, you said so eloquently, I wish I could speak like that, but, you know, these people have worked very hard to get to this point. And they've put in a lot of effort, money. They went through the Planning Commission, they went through the Building Department, and it seems like everything's going down, and now they come to us. Why are we doing this at this point, able to shut that down when they've got so much involved here? So, you know, I'm just curious, like I said, we voted it down a few months ago, and I can't remember what it was, I got a phone call the next day, said, "Well, technically, we're allowed to pass it because of such and such," whatever. So, anyway, those are my comments. I feel really bad about what's going on here. We have a bunch of our constituents out here that are upset. I feel like that's our responsibility to deal with that. So it's a tough situation. Thank you.
Mrs. Franson.
I, with respect to the mayor, I think that, we've heard from Mr. Lingenfelter, and we've heard from PLK many times, and we've heard from the residents, I don't think there's much else that he can add. I appreciated the PowerPoint he sent with some of the details, but I would rather just have us go to a vote and vote it up or down after we do the second and third readings. That's my opinion.
Mr. Moore.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just with regard to kind of the process, and, you know, we've been through all this, and only now council is having a chance to weigh in. At what point prior to now should council have weighed in to express sort of displeasure with the vision for this project? If not right now, was there, was there an earlier window when we should have made that clear?
Mayor Snyder.
Thank you. There are Planning Commission meetings every month, and there are packets, and people are on the sunshine list, and they receive all of that information about what's coming in front of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission sits at these seats, they're standard meetings every month, and that's where, you know, developers come in and present information to us. And it's also time where the Planning Commission members say, you know, these changes need to be made for it to get there. The fire chief was at, I think, about, just about every one of them, and he discussed what he felt needed to be changed. And it took a while for this to get passed the Planning Commission, but it did make it past the Planning Commission. So that's really what it comes down to. And I, people always say, "I didn't hear anything about it," or, "I didn't get a notice about it." You know, there's a lot of rules and regulations to what the city has to do to, to communicate with people. But there's also, you know, some responsibility back on the community members, much like you did when the Wason Way stuff was going on and the change. There's some, you know, an important part of that, of being a good community member is paying attention, you know, as the process moves along.
Mrs. Hoover.
Thank you. To the, Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity to watch the Planning Commission's meetings regarding this development, and I know that Mr. Boyle was at them, and I believe Ms. Farrell was as well, as well as other residents. How did the Planning Commission take their concerns into consideration with the recommendations that came out of Planning Commission?
Well, mostly.
Mayor Snyder.
Thank you. Most of it was, you know, driven by the Fire Department. You know, for a Planning Commission, for our, from our perspective, we looked at the zoning that was there and what could be built there, and how many, how dense it could be compared to the plan that they brought and what they put in place. At the time, when it came to the Planning Commission, the home that you guys just sort of semi-approved the zoning on was not part of the packet, so that was all discussed. And then there was discussion on, you know, clear-cutting trees and whether the retention, detention basin, retention basin, and whether it meant open space concerns. So there was discussion on all of those things, much like there was discussion here that probably sparked, or was sparked potentially from some of the Planning Commission meetings.
Mrs. Hoover.
In terms of the density, which seems to be one of the primary concerns, do you have a response to that?
Mayor Snyder.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, you know, the biggest concern was parking, and was overflow parking going out onto the street. And the garages, I know, you know, people, people will have a two-car garage, but they can fill a two-car garage with their furniture and stuff, like a lot of people do. So now, where do those two cars go to park if they're considered part of the plan? And then guest parking, overflow parking. So there were a lot of discussions on that. And then there was the thought process of, you know, how much is really going to be pushed back into the community, and how much would not be pushed back into the community. So those were some of the discussions. There was a lot on turning radius with the fire engines and moving the fire engines in and out of that area. I mean, that's primarily the reason for the purchase of the other property and that secondary ingress, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Franson.
So, not to forestall any other discussion, but I feel that I'm ready to vote. And I would love to make sure that the folks who have been very patient can perhaps get home at a reasonable hour. Again, I get paid to do it.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yeah, just, I'll make this as quick as I can in the interest of time. You know, I think this has been an incredibly complex issue, and I keep saying none of us on council are lawyers, and then I remember that it literally is. But I don't, it feels like none of us are lawyers.
A really cool lawyer.
Yeah, a really cool, casual approach of a lawyer. And so, you know, I think there's, this speaks to a bigger issue. I've asked this question to a couple of folks on the administration, a couple other counselors. My theory on governing, on legislating, is that I am not a pollster. I was not elected to go door-to-door and ask how every single one of my constituents would vote on every issue, and then tally those up and vote how that would be. That's a direct democracy, which is great, that's what they do in Switzerland. That's not what we do here. I think that I was voted into office based on my morals, based on my values, based on my ethics, and so I try to legislate based on those things. In this situation, it appears that those two things are somewhat aligned. I have heard from more constituents than I've heard from on any other issue, on this issue, and that's wild, because I live in Ward 1. We are like just about as far away from this development as we could be. And I've had folks who live across the street from me and down the street from me reach out and email and send a message, and I appreciate that. I love to see people be civilly engaged. So that brings us to kind of the crux of the issue, in my opinion, here, which is, what are we legislating on? And no one can seem to give me a clear answer on this. Are we obligated to vote on this issue based on our beliefs that this is a value add and a net good to our community? Because in that case, I would vote one way. Are we obligated instead to vote on this issue in that it has legally complied to all of the processes and checked all of the correct boxes? Because that's a different vote. And I've asked that question, and there does not seem to be a clear answer. And the answer that people have seems to be based on different schools of thought around governing. And so I think that's up to each of us. How you are going to vote on this issue is going to be based on how you think as a legislator, how you feel as a legislator. I wish that there was more clarity on that. I wish that our zoning was more, I wish that we had assessed this earlier on. This has brought to light a lot of concerns that I have with our zoning. Our car-to-house ratio is wild. A one-to-one ratio is so unrealistic in my mind. I don't know any two-to-three-bedroom homes that have one car in this day and age. But technically, that's, that's the zone. That's, that's the law. And this is compliant with that law, even if they only put one car in two-car garage. So I, this is a much more complex issue. It looks complicated on the surface, and it's even more complicated underneath of that. I would also love for us to get this fully addressed this evening. As much as I would love for this to be as easy as here, that we would like to see change, send it back to Planning Commission, that is not a path that we are allowed to take tonight. This has to be acted on this evening. So that's just my thoughts, as that seemed anticlimactic, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Gertner.
Yeah, so I've been trying to be patient. So I don't want to rush this process through. We're already doing two readings. I think we need to allow as much time and space for discussion as possible. This is too important just to do for convenience sake to get out of here. Ms. Hoover, a while ago tonight, you brought up a couple of questions, and one is the, what is the ideal density? And I think that is up to us. You know, just like Mrs.
You got it.
Thank you. Just like Ms. Bowling stated a few minutes ago, like, there isn't an ideal number in our code. I think if you look at the neighborhood, it is intentionally, I'm sorry, not intentionally, not the right word, it is directly across the street from other blocks that are in the, that would be comparable if we only allowed 20 homes to that. The other blocks that we live in would be very comparable. I don't understand why we're taking this one block specifically and trying to increase its density by 200% when it's surrounded by single-family and multifamily dwellings. That feels like the buck stops with us to make this decision. I've got a petition that I helped circulate, as well as another person helped me circulate over the course of three days, and I've got 56 signatures. And sorry to a few people on Facebook that I couldn't get this out to today. But our residents are encouraging us to listen to them, and it's our responsibility to vote on this. It's not up to the Planning Commission. We've taken recommendations from the Planning Commission wholeheartedly with limiting vape shops. On the other hand, the Planning Commission has told us what they think about food trucks, and we've wholeheartedly disagreed with them. We're allowed to disagree with them, whether they think this is the right thing to do or not. That is part of the democratic process of our city. And so I, some of the arguments, I think, are trying to pass the buck, because this is such a heavy, difficult decision on us, and it is. But it should be, because we're about to potentially change the lives of the people who live directly in this neighborhood. And I don't think any single one of us, I can't, I'm not speaking for us, but I can't imagine any single one of us voting to do this kind of density change on our streets. I don't think our neighbors would allow that to happen. I think we would have our doors knocked on, our phone calls, our phone ringing off the hook. And so I think the buck stops with us. And I encourage you, as well as many residents, and as Ms. Bowling said, this is a very contentious issue. We've gotten lots of feedback. I think we need to listen to the people.
Mrs. Franson.
Thank you. And I apologize, I think you took it as I meant it. I definitely don't want to like forestall conversation, discussion. I was mostly just wanting to acknowledge that everyone is giving up their time, and I do appreciate it. Yeah, but yeah, I think with what Ms. Bowling and you, Mr. Gertner, have said, has been weighing on me, too. Like, there are probably going to be some times in the future where I'm going to have to vote how I feel is best for the city in the face of opposition from my constituents. to vote how I feel is best for the city in the face of opposition from my constituents. Maybe that's not tonight, but another time, another place. I have to weigh the thoughts and the feelings of my constituents against the good of the city. And sometimes it's hard to know how much weight to give each. And so I am glad that I have heard so much from the residents, and I think in this case we are aligned in that. But I think it's worth it to also think in the future, sometimes even if people are passionate, let's say this comes back and it is 20 townhomes, and it is all the things that we wanted, there will probably still be someone who's opposed to it. Because any change, unfortunately, will have someone who does not want it to happen. So this doesn't change my mind on this or anything, but I just figured that might be good to think about in the future. We still, even though people are very passionate about some issues, sometimes we have to think about the bigger issue of the city. That's, yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yeah, I'd also like to note, I think, you know, it was briefly mentioned in the addresses to council, and I'm sure we've all talked about it and thought about it amongst ourselves, this looming threat of lawsuit has put us in a really uncomfortable and, in my opinion, a pretty unfair position. This was approved by planning commission before it got to us. And now I feel that we're being put in somewhat of a scapegoat situation where we have to make the final say, and it feels that we are being told that there is a right and a wrong answer. And I think that is incredibly unfair, especially given that we heard a lot of this feedback from residents at the time of the planning commission meetings. That was not a unanimous approval by the planning commission. I think that a lot of these issues could have been addressed before it comes to council. And now the visual is that council doesn't care, council doesn't hear anybody, when the reality is all of that happened without any of our input. This is when we are giving our input. And so I would like to say, you know, earlier, Mrs. Hoover was giving statistics and facts and was being booed by the crowd. It's not fun to be the person who delivers information that doesn't align with our beliefs or our values. But that is her job, that is all of our jobs. And, you know, we are not, we are here to make sure that we do our job to the best of our ability. And I think painting us as these villains who are, you know, here to support developers at all costs and not listening to any residents, well, that's what we've been doing. That's why we voted to not have this reading and this discussion at the last special meeting. So I think that's worth noting. I feel like we've been sort of held hostage in this position with this threat of a lawsuit looming. And believe it or not, I don't like being sued. I've never been sued until I got onto city council. I know that's hard to believe. And I would love to never get sued again. And I think that that is a really unfun position to be in. And that is the job that we all signed up for as legislators. And sometimes we have to do the hard thing. And I think in this case, I never want to put us at risk, I never want to put us at jeopardy, I never want to cost us money unfairly. But I also just think that ethically, and when I look at the future for Norwood that I see, this does not align with that. And so we're in a tough situation. There is no answer where we are going to make everyone happy. And that sucks, but that is the reality of legislating.
Thank you. Ms. Royce.
I have a very specific question, just because I'm not good at math. If, because I'll just say, my number one concern that's arisen from public, you know, that I most align with, is parking. And I do think an 18-foot two-car garage is difficult to justify. I mean, I think, I've never owned a garage. I can't afford a home. So I think 18 feet is a little unrealistic. And frankly, if that wasn't, I mean, that's what most, is giving me pause, I'll say. So can I ask, I don't know if they'll know off the top of their heads, but if you did a 24-foot garage, if anyone from PLK can tell me how many units that would cut down on? Just sort of, that's quick math.
The question was posed, so I will ask you to step forward and answer that one.
Wouldn't it just be a third?
I mean, I'm asking questions related to garages and density. If you guys don't want me to ask, I mean.
A standard two-car garage door is 16 feet.
Is it really?
Yep.
If you, well, can I ask, if you upped it to 24, because I believe that's what?
The garage door is still only 16 feet.
Okay. But if you up, if you?
Doesn't change what we're putting in the building.
I know, but if you widened the garage, do you know how many units you would lose?
I can't answer that question without.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, I submitted the stuff to speak earlier, but I wasn't allowed, so leaving it at that.
Cool. Excellent.
Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. We should probably find an end to this. But scolding our, scolding the people in here is just so arrogant. These people own this building. They're the reason why we get to sit here and never pass an opportunity to scold the people that vote for you. I just don't understand that. I just, I can't get it. These people are here because they care about their homes, they care about their, and you're going to sit here and scold them? How freaking arrogant, dude? I just don't get it. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
I believe this will be another question for Mr. Moore. If this is voted no, what would the next steps look like?
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a couple of possibilities. Developer could try to meet with a council member or two, or maybe all of, you know, the development committee and try to figure out, well, what's a path forward? They could submit a different plan. After I met with Mr. Lengenfelter and Tom Tepey, their attorney, yesterday, and I was assured that they will just sue. And so that's what I was told yesterday. There's the possibility, and I just, and the logic, kind of the thinking, there's like, it's going to cost them $100,000 plus to do a new set of plans to whatever that might be. And so, you know, that's, might as well spend that money on litigation and get the plans that you submitted originally. So that's kind of, that's a possibility as well. So if there's any number, it may just be that nothing happens on that lot for the foreseeable future. They may sell it, they may, I don't know.
Mrs. Hoover.
Mr. Moore, if they were to file lawsuit, which they would have every, you know, anyone that can file a lawsuit, as you like to say, and they were to win the lawsuit, then what would happen?
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would guess that the suit they filed would have two claims. One, that the denial of the preliminary plan was invalid, and so the preliminary court would say that, no, that's, that plan is now approved. And they would also pursue a taking claim, which the idea being that we've denied this, we've demised them of all economically feasible use of the property. And in theory, they would ask for the $3 million, I think is the value that was a part of the purchase price of the multicolor lot. So that would be the two. So that's a possibility, we could get ordered to approve this and/or ordered to pay a bunch of money in order to get the property, basically is what we would be buying the property, or damages for the deprivation of the use of the property for a certain amount of time. Those would be the claims. Now, what a court might end up deciding if they were to win and how that would play out, your guess is as good as mine.
Thank you. For the law director, and just in this hypothetical scenario, like, where would that leave other development projects? You know, there's a number of PLK projects slated to come. I'm sure there's a number of abatements they will ask for in the future. Where would that leave those proceedings?
Mr. Moore.
In theory, they wouldn't have any effect on it. It's a practical matter. If you end up in an argument with somebody, it tends to bleed over into other aspects of your relationship.
Interesting. Thank you.
Current motion on the floor by, oh, Mrs. Hoover.
Sorry, I'm still processing. Something that Mrs. Bowling said, that following your heart versus your head was not exactly it. I sort of feel like both decisions in this are wrong. That being, I absolutely understand the increase in having these townhomes in people's backyards. I know I shared at one of my, one of the previous meetings about the garage that was knocked down behind me. And that made, it makes my life a little less enjoyable at my property. And that is their right to have knocked down that garage. And it did impact me. I know on my street, we have lots of one, one home and a four-family and a three-unit apartment. So we do have some mixed density on our street. And having a big development plopped in there would be very disruptive. And I absolutely understand and respect that. My heart goes out to a gentleman having this, the driveway next to him. I would love to see some additional screening for him. So I am very sympathetic to the residents. I'm also sympathetic to the developers who have followed the rules. They were told to put in an egress, and they bought a house, and they put in an egress, you know, they're planning to put out an egress. They were told to put in the retention ponds, they're doing the retention pond. They've done a lot, I understand from the planning commission, that there was quite a bit of back and forth. And I can respect their frustration, the frustration of the developers, that they own property that we are making impossible for them to move forward with this current plan. I'm also aware that the developer is trying to make a home here. Their plan is to bring their home, their headquarters, to Norwood, to Factory 52. So while they might not live in Norwood, they're deeply investing in Norwood, like millions and millions of dollars, and I understand that. And so I'm not loving the sort of evil big developer versus the homeowner, but I also can understand the feelings. I'm also frustrated that the whole process has been pretty politicized. That, again, that just comes with the big bucks. And I feel like one of the things that I have been trying to push for since I've been on council is an increase in communication. And I do know that there were many opportunities where residents were able to speak, and I feel like they took a lot of those, advantage of a lot of those, and they showed up to a lot of things. But there are also a lot of folks who don't know what's going on. And I'm curious if we had a better process in place that we could make this a smoother experience. I know I reached out to Mr. Skelly about other properties that we still have available, like space in Norwood, and to find out how they're zoned. And so maybe we want to make some changes for our other properties to see how they're zoned and potentially look at making changes to those. This property is zoned neighborhood business district. And that zoning allows, that zoning allows for this. So that's sort of the circle that I keep going around in in my own head, is the rights of the residents to their home and their comfort, and the rights of the people who purchased the property. And if we're going to say no to this because it's too dense, which I, Susan Hoover, agree with, I'm not sure how that's going to go in court. And I mean, I have concerns about that, but that's, maybe we'll find that out. And that's all I have.
Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. In my opinion, this body, we probably should have stayed away from any type of hypothetical lawsuits discussion. I personally don't think that's a great idea. So I think that was a complete mistake for us to bring that up. However, I do have, is there a method, do you think PLK would like to speak on this? We've said a lot, is there a method for that, or is that inappropriate at this time, or is there?
If a member of council, as with consideration of any other ordinances, would request someone to take questions from council, that is your option.
A question, a follow-up service. Mr. President, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to ask the executives from PLK here if they do have anything to input here, since we have said a lot here. If they have any input and they would like to say anything, I would like to give them an opportunity. So there's a question towards them, if that's okay.
Mr. Lengenfelter.
Thank you. And thank you, council member. Nick Lengenfelter, on behalf of PLK, thank you. I did actually submit to speak. I sent a presentation a week ago, but I don't know where that went to. And want to just say at a high level that we have always viewed Norwood as our partner. We have. We spent millions of dollars cleaning up blighted sites in the community. Excuse me. I didn't talk during your time, please don't talk during mine. This site is zoned for 80-plus units right now. What many of you probably don't know, and you just did it on another ordinance, is the second you adopted that PUD standard, and this came from the law director, I think it's 1155 of your zoning code, actually gave you 20% bonus for more density. You just put 105 or 108 units of density and approval on our property. That's your zoning, not ours. And we are trying to build between 45 and 48 units on something that is zoned for over 100 units now. We could do that. We're allowed to build 50 feet. We tried to build houses to meet the neighborhood. In the package I submitted, I literally broke down, we have zero variances. Zero variances in the base code, zero variances from your PUD plan. You are effectively saying, I don't want you to build right off your investment because we have done nothing but meet the codes of the city of Norwood, the codes that are required for anybody to build. Every neighbor around us is maintaining their NBD zoning. We are not. We are being singled out, and our zoning is being taken away. Actually, if I'm a neighbor and I want to sell my home someday, and I sell it to a developer, the temple could have five houses built on it. Whether you like that or not, that's the zoning for the temple. Everyone around us has NBD zoning. Nobody else has been rezoned but us. So we are being singled out because we invested in the community. We're building a $6 million corporate headquarters down the street to move our entire office here. That's what's under construction. And we're being singled out because we're investing in the community. All we're trying to do is build something we are fully entitled to build. Yes, you have the ability to put a PUD overlay on it. I stood in front of the council and said, you understand if you put a PUD overlay on it with no rules? We have no rules. We've asked for those rules. We can't get them. We have no clear guidance on what those rules are. So I asked the law department after the last meeting, where they asked the safety service director and a few others, what does PLK, what rights do they have? And they openly acknowledged, we have no rights left. So you took our rights, just like they could take them off of your home right now. That's what happened. So what we're saying is, and I said, I asked law director and he gave back the list of rules of everything we complied with. And this is what we submitted to you, that we are in compliance with every single building code rule, every zoning rule, whether people like it or not, that's what the zoning is. We didn't write the zoning code. That's the zoning code from long before we came. So again, it's your right to vote no to something. We value being your partner. But at the same time, if you take our rights away, I have nothing to do but fight for my right to my property. You can do whatever you want, and we're not, we're trying to not be a community partner. We're moving our whole corporate staff here. But at the same time, you're saying, we want you to build nothing, we don't want you to have value. You stripped the value from our land. That's what's happened. And that's all I want to say.
Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. So how is this, how is this to the point where you have done all this, and now it's on us to tell you yes or no? Like, why, you say?
We didn't want the overlay.
Like, how is that, how is that on us now? Like, I don't, you know, I don't pretend to be, you know, but for all these, you know, you've done everything the building department said, you've done everything, and now you're in zoning compliance. And why is it on us then? If you've done everything up to par, and now they're looking at us to say, no, you can't, like, we have to stand with the people that vote for us. Like, that's my job. So why is it on us then? Something just don't add up.
Because you put the PUD overlay on it. That's what happened. So as soon as council adopted a PUD overlay with no zoning code or no additional rules or regulations to it, which I was here in December and said, we don't want the overlay without the rules, you put it back. I said I didn't want I, I said I didn't want it, and everybody did it anyway. And so my hands are tied.
I want you to do this so bad. But I've got people behind you that vote for me, and they're like, hey, man, you do it. You know, it's election season. Like, what, where are we supposed to go? Because, man, I'm excited for you, but you, you see the situation I'm in. Why are we in this situation when you say you're compliant, and now it's up to us to shut you down? I don't, to me, it just doesn't make-
That's a question for the law director.
You have to look at the process. And, and that's, in my opinion, we need to look at the process. Because this needs to be done earlier in the process, not like this, and shut you down like this. This is not right. So-
Well, we're 50%, we're under 50% of what we could build right now. I mean, I don't know how much more we can do with the code there.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Moore.
All I was going to say is, Mr. Brayden, it's, I agree that it is interesting that we arrive at this moment where one vote has pitchforks out for us and the other vote has, you know, significant other. It's like, how, how does the process produce a moment like this that is, you know, that contentious? It, it does seem quite broken.
I think that's why I like government so much. That's why I'm such a geek, man. It's, it's always something different.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yeah, I would love to ask a question.
Mr. Langenfelter.
Yes, ma'am.
I, you know, I appreciate the development that you've done in the community, and I've said that I am pro-development in the past, and I still stand on that. You know, we have concerns with the size of the development, with the density of the development. We were not put in a position where we were given the opportunity to have that back and forth for very long. We weren't given the same opportunity that the Planning Commission was given to have that. Here's what we'd like to see. Let's come back and make changes. By the time the plan gets to us, it's finalized. The, the feedback that we're being given by residents and by our constituents is not that they don't want any develop, well, some people don't want any development at all. It's that they don't like the development in its exact iteration. Is there any kind of openness or flexibility to lessen the amount of units or to, to change the width of buildings or any? I understand that that is not, this exact process can't lead to that. But is there any flexibility on PLK's part? I don't think that anyone, and again, I can't speak on behalf of council either, but from the conversations I've had, I don't think that anyone is interested in leaving that property undeveloped and leaving it blank. I have said before that a parking lot is not doing anything for water retention, for green space. But we have concerns about the, the plans as they currently stand. Is there any interest in flexibility there?
Couple of things. It's a contaminated parking lot that needs to be remediated. So we're going to take about nine feet of soil out of there.
I have mentioned that at the meeting.
So I just wanted to be clear on that one. It's not just a parking lot, it's something that has to have, be cleaned up.
Right.
At an additional significant cost. You can't bear the burden of that cost without spreading it across something, right? And I think the key is, it's different if I'm up here saying I want to double the density that's allowed on the property. I'm not. I'm not trying to come in, and we literally scaled it back to be three-story homes. The average home there, I think, is 32 to 35 feet at the peak, which is roughly the same height or within two or three feet of the average homes around us. We tried to make sure it fit the neighborhood, but also could cover the cost to clean up the site. Honestly, we, you say, well, we'll come back with another plan. I'll come back with another plan, and I'm just slinging a four-story building up there so I can cover the costs a different way. Because all we do is keep, I, I understand where you're coming from, but you also like to get to council, which is the request, which is why we go to Planning Commission. The mayor's number wasn't wrong, it's probably about a quarter million dollars to show up here. You have to hire engineers, architects, everyone to do that plan. We'd have to go get new soil borings for where those foundations moved. Everything costs more money to get back here. How that's fixed, I don't know. But what I can say is that, like, we are looking at it from the standpoint of, we're compliant with zoning. Actually, one of the requests we made to Planning Commission was, why is city council voting on this anyway? Can we just be compliant with zoning? And they declined it, which I'm surprised, it didn't come to you, because in theory, you could have just said, he complies with zoning, I don't want to vote on it. But Planning Commission said no to that because they actually wanted the additional standards. One of the reasons they put the additional standards on there was, they wanted higher quality materials, things like that, all the things that should benefit the neighborhood. Because under traditional zoning, I can put vinyl on there, I can do whatever I wanted. They wanted it to say the high-quality materials that we had. So that was one of the main reasons that we had agreed that this might be an okay path. But to your point, like, would we make changes? I, I can't tell you that because I don't know what the economics of those requested changes are. We have scaled this back to the point, i- i- it is where it's at. Like, and if we want to, I have to figure out how to make more money somewhere else to cover the cost to clean it up. Like, that's, what that parcel was, was actually a highway exit that was originally planned. So a lot of that soil there was garbage that they actually excavated out when they built I-71 and dumped on the parcel. The green space is mostly honeysuckle. Like, if, actually, you go pull old satellite photos, there's not a lot of trees there. It's just overgrown. So again, what does that look like? I don't know the answer, but what it comes from our angle is like, hey, we've got density, we're going, we're willing, we've already basically slashed it in half. Like, I don't know how much more you can go and cover the cost. There's just, there's not a lot of cost, cost there left, there's no other way to cover it. So we want to work with the city, but I also, we are now on month 13. Four different sets of plans, $1,000 plus in prints that have been lost three or four times. Like, I just, we're trying, but I also, we can't continue to operate in this vacuum of, you can't build anything, you've got to keep coming back to council and spend $250,000 to come back to the door. It doesn't work. Like, that's why we have Planning Commission. I know, I don't know what else to say. We're just in this spiral. So.
Thank you. Yeah, and I, I also ask the question, why is this coming to the forecouncil? None of us on council is an engineer. None of us are on the zoning board, none of us are on the Planning Commission. You know, none of us are experts on engineering or the structural soundness of this development or, you know, turning radius. Or I, I manage events for a living. I don't have any information beyond what the public has on that. I also have quite a few concerns with this even coming to council for approval. This process is incredibly confusing. I find it very unusual that it is coming to us at this late stage, again, with, with very little direction about how we are obligated to vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
I was curious if Mr. Powers or perhaps the mayor could speak to the PUD, PUD that was put before council many, many months ago.
Mayor Schneider.
Mr. President.
Yes, please.
Thanks for the opportunity. Mr. Brayden, you asked the question about, why is it here? Why is it in front of council? It's because of the Ohio revised code, because although the statutory city that we live in, that's how, that's the process of how developments work. And they go in front of the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission makes, makes a recommendation to city council, and then the seven members. So, so the Planning Commission is a member, members of the Planning Commission are appointed. But seven council members are elected. And typically, they're elected by a, a majority of people. So there's 250 people. For a ward, I don't know, you get 250 votes, maybe 300 votes, something like that. That's your constituents, 300 people. And then for an at-large position, you get 1,200 votes, something like that. And those are your constituents. So when you talk about, you know, a group of people that talk at a council meeting, you're not hearing from all of your constituents. You're hearing from a vocal majority or vocal minority at this point. But it's the Ohio revised code that dictates how, what steps take place. When we talk about putting a PUD over it, we've talked about it many times, that the PUD provides extra protections, extra things that we can do to, to facilitate getting a better product for our community. And, and that's what we did in this situation. The, you know, the PLK group came to us and said, this is what we're trying to accomplish. We looked at all the zoning, you know, and that's where the PUD part comes in, where we can, we, it does give us, it gives the city the ability to control a little bit more. And that's why it was put in place. And sometimes that's good for the developer. In a situation like this, it's not good for the developer. But I think we're getting a better product, and that's, that's what it was all about. So I think I answered that question. I mean, ultimately, it's the Ohio revised code. It's not like you guys are being thrown under the bus. It has to come here. It's required to come here. And normally, it's all pretty much hashed out, and people, you know, it's, it's just a smooth process, and you don't, but in this situation, there are some hot-button issues that people have brought to the forefront. That's how it works. So these are tough decisions that council members have to make. And that's pretty much it. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, you, you did. And maybe I just sort of want to reflect back that I understand how it's here before us, and I respect that we want more, or the city wanted more control. One of the things we're hearing is, we want less deaths. So the, the control is not about density. And maybe this is a question for, for the law director. The, the control is not about density. The control is about, like, the siding and the features and things like that. Is that correct?
Mr. Moore.
A PUD, using a PUD can definitely be a way to increase density beyond, in a lot of projects it's done, it will increase the density beyond the underlying zoning or will move the density around in a way that wouldn't be allowed in the underlying zoning. And this is, I think, is the first one where it's really, the, what's requested is not, is compliant with the, the underlying zoning and is less dense than is allowed. So it is kind of an unusual situation.
Thank you.
Mr. Garten.
If you look at the plans, where does more density go? This is, this is an intellectual argument that I don't think is practical. There's a reason why we have a problem with parking, it's because there's no room for it. There's, these 45 townhomes are taking up so much space that we don't have room for the infrastructure that we need to make this thing work. It, it's, it's a practical matter. If you walk by that property, if you look at it, it's, it's hard to imagine more density there. And so I understand that somebody would want more density there to make their profit, you know, margin better. But profit margins aren't our concern. We've turned many, I mean, there was a gentleman here a couple of months ago looking for a curb cut to make his property more valuable. And we didn't care about that at all. We, we let that go by the wayside. I mean, it wasn't directly before us. But there are, there are plenty of issues where we are not concerned about the profit margins of somebody else. I think it, statutorily, this comes to city council because we're here to protect the quality of life of the city. And, and that's where the buck stops.
Mrs. Bowling.
I'm not a developer, so I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I would imagine the density could go up. I would imagine that instead of being 45 townhomes, this could be a four- or five-story apartment building. It has 100 units or something of that nature. So I do think the potential to build a more dense property is there, and that's something that's important to consider. If this plan comes back and it's a five-story apartment building with 100 people in it, that is not going to resolve either our parking issue or our density issue. You know, my ideal resolution for this would have been to be able to meet in the middle and say, we like the concept of the development, we'd like to see less density, we'd like to see improvement on parking. I don't know that that's an option this evening, but I do think you, you could build a more dense building there, which is worth noting.
Mr. Garten.
True. I mean, you could definitely build higher according to NBD code, but there still has to be infrastructure there that would meet the requirement, not the requirements, but the practical guidelines of that, that space. I mean, putting 100 high-rise apartment, you know, 100 residential high-rise units there still needs that, have that parking space. And this, this place does not have that kind of space for that kind of people. I mean, I'm not an engineer as well, and so maybe I can't speak to that. But as a practical matter, I, I think this property is way too small for what we're talking about here.
Thank you. Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify, my comments were procedurally, why we have to wait till we cost a developer, you know, hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars before we vote on it, you know, we need to look at that procedure. So the Ohio revised code, you can quote that all you want. We really need to look at it and figure out how we could get, get it in front of us sooner so we're not in this situation. That, that was kind of my comment. Thanks.
Mrs. Hoover.
I appreciate that, Mr. Brayden. And I would say that I have looked at other neighborhoods. Now, this is Cincinnati, which, different, but neighborhoods Westwood and Walnut Hills do have different models that are, have more community input much, much earlier on. I really like those models because I think that when we have that, those conversations early on and there's really good buy-in, I, I think that things go smoother. I do feel like there, there was probably more community input with the Factory 52, and I feel like people probably had a better sense of what was going on. This is a much smaller development, while it feels very, very big for those neighbors, it's a smaller development for them. And, well, they, and they probably feel like they did a lot of community, I'm not going to speak for them. I would like, and this also doesn't help us tonight at all, but I would like for us to take a look at what properties we still have to be developed and what we want to do moving forward, so that we don't have these sorts of situations where people are so very unhappy. I am also for development, I'm for good development, smart development, that will make our, our city more, more vibrant. This is a really, this is a really tough situation, I feel.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Hoover, seconded by Mrs. Bowling, is to suspend the rules and have the second and third readings of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Excuse me. Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Garten?
No.
Mr. Brayden?
No.
With a vote of five to two, that motion does not carry. Because of the motion to suspend the rules, we do need at least six. Mr. Moore.
May I make a comment? Do I have to have a new motion?
You, you go ahead and feel free to discuss, make a comment.
Well, so if I may recap, I think what the consequences are of what we just did. By not having the second and third readings tonight, we will effectively not meet the deadline, and, and therefore, by default, the preliminary plan will be approved. Is that correct, law director?
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unless you add an ordinance rejecting approval of the preliminary plan to the agenda and suspend the rules and have all three readings and pass it by a vote of six to seven, then the plan will go into effect by default.
Mr. Garten.
Can we put a motion for a second reading and just vote it down?
You-
You can't vote on a second reading.
You're going to have a motion to have the second reading and then-
Mr. President.
Mr. Moore.
A vote on the, on the ordinance that's on the agenda will not, no matter how you vote on that ordinance, it will not reject the plan.
Mr. Moore.
May I make a motion to amend the agenda of the meeting to introduce a rejection ordinance for the preliminary plan by PLK?
Is there a second? Mr. Garten?
A second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Garten, is to amend the agenda to add an ordinance for consideration. If I can see the caption of that. That ordinance is denying approval of the preliminary plan unit development, PUD plan as modified, for the property south of Robertson Avenue, known as 4500 Beach, parcel 651-0030-0206 and 651-00300194, referred to as Robertson South. Is there any discussion? Mr. Moore.
Yes, for the law director, so is it accurate to say then that the, unless we have all three readings and pass this denial motion by six to seven votes?
Six to one, to clarify.
Excuse me, six to one, six to seven, yeah, six to one vote. That otherwise, essentially by default, the plan, the preliminary plan would be approved because we didn't otherwise- we didn't otherwise act on it, and the expiry date for acting on it will have expired.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's, that's correct. If council does nothing within 60 days, plus whatever the developer agrees to as an extension, it goes into, it goes into effect by default. If council doesn't vote by three-fourths to reject the recommendation of the planning commission, the recommendation of the planning commission goes into effect.
Thank you.
So the motion on the floor by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Gerton, is to amend the agenda to add the ordinance denying the approval of the PUD. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
No.
Ms. Royce?
Sure.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
With a vote of six to one, that motion carries. The ordinance has now been added to the agenda. Mrs. Franzen.
Okay, so, I'm going to move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Is there a second?
Oh, that's the ordinance.
Mr. Gerton.
I second the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen, seconded by Mr. Gerton, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Any discussion? Mrs. Franzen.
So, yeah, I, I, we have to do something, or this goes into effect without us having any say at all. So I want to just do the three readings, and then we can vote up or down. If most of us are against this, we vote, so, I don't know, not to vote yes to deny, just, I don't remember that. Then, the PUD is null and utter in effect. But if we don't, if there's not a, what is it, a three-quarters majority?
Correct, so that would be another six.
And then five members. Six, sorry. My apologies. Nah. So that is where we are now. I just want to make that clear for everyone who is voting. Okay? Cool.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the law director, on clause two here, whereas the planning commission of the City of Norwood conducted a public hearing on June 19th, 2025 pursuant to notice, and having reviewed those plans unanimously voted to recommend the approval with modifications by the council of the City of Norwood. Is it accurate to say that the planning commission unanimously voted to approve those preliminary plans? And if that is not accurate, do we need to modify this potentially, since that's the second clause?
Mr. Moore.
If that's the case, then it probably should be amended. I thought that I pulled that language from the letter from Cary Towne from the Building Department. I don't have the letter in front of me now, so.
Mr. Moore, I didn't hear you. Can you repeat what just happened?
Sure, Mr. Braden, my, well.
Mr. Moore, please.
Thank you. Mr. Braden, my, my understanding with regard to the second clause, that it references that the planning commission unanimously voted to recommend the approval at that June 19th meeting. And my understanding is that the vote was not unanimous.
Okay.
So I just, just procedurally, I want to make sure that whatever is in here.
Good catch.
Accurately reflects.
Nice work.
The proceedings of that evening.
Nice job.
All right.
Mrs. Franzen.
I'm going to amend my motion to amend the agenda, or the ordinance as stated, to reflect the.
We, the current motion is to suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Oh, okay. So, procedurally speaking, how my.
Would you like to withdraw that motion?
I would love to withdraw that motion. Thank you, sir.
Welcome. Mr. Gerton, you will withdraw. Thank you. Mrs. Franzen.
Now, I will make a motion to amend the ordinance as stated, to reflect that the vote was not unanimous. It was, I believe, three to two.
So we will amend the ordinance in the second whereas to replace the unanimously voted, to say a vote of three in favor, two against. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Gerton.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gerton. Any discussion?
Do we have confirmation that that is correct? I'm sorry, just trying to find that memo from Cary at the moment.
Mr. Moore.
I don't have it with me. The alternative would be to just take out the word unanimously.
Mrs. Franzen.
Okay, so we can amend it to take out the word unanimously.
So we will simply remove unanimously stating that the planning commission voted to recommend the approval.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
I'm sorry, I know you said this, Mr. Moore, but can you say again that this is not a supermajority?
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council's got 60 days to act, and under some relevant, relatively, the ordinance does not, in the statute, does not say it's 60 days or it goes into effect. But to reverse the planning commission, you need a three-fourth vote. And you have to act within 60 days, and there is authority that, not directly on point, but hey, listen, this legislature's got this long to act on it, and they have to have this, they have to vote this many people. If they don't, well, the fact that they didn't pass it, it means it goes into effect, so.
Mrs. Hoover.
Thank you. So for clarity, if we vote this yes, then we are overriding the planning commission. Is that correct?
Mr. Moore.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And just for an additional point of clarity, the motion to suspend the rules and have all three readings will require six out of seven, as will the motion to pass the ordinance will require six out of seven. Because of the 75, the supermajority that is needed to overrule the planning commission. Mrs. Hoover.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience on this. So if this is not voted, then the original plan will go into effect.
Mr. Moore.
Correct.
Any further discussion? So the motion on the floor by Mrs. Franzen, seconded by Mr. Gerton, is to amend the ordinance in the second whereas clause to remove the word unanimously. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Mrs. Franzen.
Okay, now, I will make a motion that we have, suspend the rules and have all three readings of this ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Mr. Gerton?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Gerton. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
Ordinance denying approval of the preliminary planned unit development, PUD, plan as modified for the property south of Robertson Avenue, known as 4500 Beach, parcels 651-0030-0206, and 651-0030-0194, referred to as Robertson South. Ordinance denying approval of the preliminary planned unit development, PUD, plan as modified for the property south of Robertson Avenue, known as 4500 Beach, parcels 651-0030-0206, and 651-0030-0194, referred to as Robertson South. Ordinance denying approval of the preliminary planned unit development, PUD, plan as modified, for the property south of Robertson Avenue, known as 4500 Beach, parcels 651-0030-0206, or 06, and 651-0030-0194, referred to as Roberts, Robertson South.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen.
All right, I move that we pass this ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to pass the ordinance. Is there a second? Mr. Gerton?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Gerton. Any discussion? Mrs. Franzen.
I want to remind people that in this case, a yes vote means that we are denying the PUD. I know who it means that we feel that the PUD should stand. There's been a lot of votes. I just want to make that clear for everyone, especially me. Because I don't want to say the wrong thing and then have to snatch it back. I know.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Royce.
I mean, I would like to point out the importance of paying attention to procedure. We did almost just pass this by default. And I know it's really boring. I know procedure's really boring, but I'm an attorney, so I do love procedure to an extent, even though I do sometimes speak over president gears. So I just, I mean, just something to think about in the future that we, this was really chaotic, what just happened. And we're pretty lucky this just got in front of everybody. But all it would have taken was two no votes, and this would have passed by default. Actually, one no vote. Two? Two.
Two.
So just something to mull over in the future.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. But yet, so all that's true, but yet, it's all finished and ready for us, passed out and ready to go. So somebody knew this was going to happen, or thought it might happen.
Just to, to point out, Mr. Braden, historically, and I believe Mr. Moore stated this in a previous meeting, historically, there would be two sets of ordinances drafted, one to approve and one to deny. And to avoid confusion on the agenda, by default, the approved ordinances were added to the agenda, but the deny ordinances have been pre-printed and ready in the event that council chose to take action to deny.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Ms. Royce.
We don't have crystal balls, so just, I, I'm glad you must, Mr. Braden, but in the future.
What do you mean by that exactly?
I, I'm, it's amazing that you were able to predict this would happen.
I didn't, I didn't write this up.
I couldn't have predicted it, so.
I didn't write this up. I don't know what that comment means, but I didn't do this, so.
All right.
Hearing.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
I just want to reiterate that I would really like to have a long look at the process and, and not have this happen again. I really want our residents to have a stronger voice in what they want their community to look like. I'm also, I have a great deal of empathy for Mr. Leon Felder. They are business people. I'm a business person. My job is to make money, and that is his job. And I believe from his perspective, he's followed all the rules. So I don't think he's a bad guy. I'm very frustrated with this process, as I think everyone here is. And I hope that we can try to find some more smooth paths forward. And I think that having a overall vision for the city that is transparent and shared could bring some, some help to that process.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Motion on the floor by Mrs. Franzen, seconded by Mr. Gerton, is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next items. Or, Mrs. Franzen.
I, I want to move to have a five-minute recess. I think it's needed desperately.
All right. At this time, we will go ahead and take a five-minute recess. Council will return at 10:03. All right, council has returned from recess. Moving down the agenda, we have introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions. The first is an ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Franzen.
I move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Is there a second? Mrs. Bowling?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoover.
Make a motion that we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to pass the ordinance. Is there a second? Mrs. Franzen.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Mr. Moore.
Yeah, I guess we don't have any.
They've left.
They've left. My understanding is that this is sort of a precursor to the subsequent one that has to do with the clearing of overhead electric service. Does anyone else want to generally vouch for that?
Mrs. Franzen.
I believe that also this is to account for changes in billing from Duke Energy, to make sure that we can pay our power bills in a timely manner due to the increase in rates that we've all seen.
Yes, it looks like the Exhibit A identifies where the appropriations are being increased and where that is being pulled from, what amounts are being decreased.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Hoover, seconded by Mrs. Franzen, is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
It's okay.
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement with Duke Energy for an estimated cost of $175,000 to remove overhead electric service along Montgomery Road from Elma Avenue to Lawrence Avenue and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Franzen.
I move we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Mrs. Bowling?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
My understanding is this is part of the Montgomery Road pedestrian safety plan. Is that correct?
Ms. Schneider.
Let me press my green button. Mr. Powers is here, but this is, this is a project, removing those overhead lines was a project that was brought up prior to that project, but is being worked in at the same time as that, yes. There's a large transformer in front of the old Fideli Federal, the Ventura Building, that's under the sidewalk. I think they're removing those at the same time, so yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Franzen.
I'm really excited to see this. I, it's just great to see so much transformation. And I think after such a hard issue, it's nice to have something that I think we can all be really excited about and agree about.
Mr. Moore.
Yes, if I may ask Mr. Powers a question, is that all right?
Mr. Powers.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Powers. So I understand it's 750. So I understand it's 750 feet, it's been being taken from overhead, being put underground in that Elm to Lawrence section. Is this the extent of that, or is this just the section that we're on now? Meaning, will there be additional underground utilities along Montgomery going further north and south from that corridor?
This is the full extent for this project.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you. The motion on the floor by Mrs. Framson, seconded by Mrs. Bowling, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Framson? Yes. Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement with Duke Energy for an estimated cost of $175,000 to remove overhead electric service along Montgomery Road from Elm Avenue to Lawrence Avenue and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement with Duke Energy for an estimated cost of $175,000 to remove overhead electric service along Montgomery Road from Elm Avenue to Lawrence Avenue and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement with Duke Energy for an estimated cost of $175,000 to remove overhead electric service along Montgomery Road from Elm Avenue to Lawrence Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling.
I move we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to pass the ordinance. Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Framson? Yes. Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Next item is an ordinance rescinding the community reinvestment area agreement with 1027 Group LLC and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Bowling.
I move we suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Mrs. Hoover.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Mrs. Bowling.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, a few weeks ago, we got the report from the committee that reviews the CRAs every year, I believe, and this was the one that had requested for it to be removed by the owners of the business. So they were unable to meet their guidelines, and they came to the city and asked to have it taken away. So we are not taking it away against anyone's will.
Any further discussion? All right. Motion on the floor by Mrs. Bowling, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Framson? Yes. Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
Ordinance rescinding the community reinvestment area agreement with 1027 Group LLC and declaring an emergency. Ordinance rescinding the community reinvestment area agreement with 1027 Group LLC and declaring an emergency. Ordinance rescinding the community reinvestment area agreement with 1027 Group LLC and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Framson.
I move we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Framson to pass the ordinance. Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Framson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Last item is a resolution to participate in the National Opioid Litigation Settlement Agreement with certain secondary manufacturers and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Framson.
I move we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Mrs. Framson to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution. Is there a second? Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
Through the President, if Mr. Moore would like to speak to what this is in regards to?
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've, council's approved, and we've signed on to a number of settlement agreements with opioid manufacturers and distributors. This is the latest one that they've come to an agreement with, and it's a bunch of, it's secondary manufacturers. I'm not exactly sure what that means, but they've agreed to it, and I'm not sure exactly how much the city's going to get, because when you go to the information site, each one of these, was it eight manufacturers, have their own settlement documents, and I really didn't see the point of going through and looking at each one, but I'm assuming it's not nearly as much money as from Pfizer, for example, or from Walgreens, but that there will be some distribution to the city of Norwood over the next several years. And the alternative is to opt out and file our own individual lawsuit against them, and that would be hard to justify financially.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Framson, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Framson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the resolution.
Resolution to participate in the National Opioid Litigation Settlement Agreement with certain secondary manufacturers and declaring an emergency. Resolution to participate in the National Opioid Litigation Settlement Agreement with certain secondary manufacturers and declaring an emergency. Resolution to participate in the National Opioid Litigation Settlement Agreement with certain secondary manufacturers and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Framson.
I move we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Framson to pass the resolution.
Resolution.
Ms. Royce.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Framson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to administration reports. Mayor Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I've said on council floor at other times that, you know, our government is extremely complicated. There are so many hoops to jump through, there are so many different individuals and so many different entities. I think when I mentioned it last, I was talking about nation building, and, you know, the country, our country was doing some nation building, or there was something going on with that, and I said, I don't see how you do it. I mean, our country, and just running the little city of Norwood is so complicated, with all the statutes and all the timelines and all the things that have to happen. So, you know, when you have complicated discussions like you had today, and went through, you know, several different iterations of what could or could not happen, and speculation about, that's just the way it is, you know? It takes that much time, and I appreciate and applaud council's efforts to try to understand fully and help other people understand fully, and to making tough decisions, because you do make tough decisions at times. As a mayor, I make tough decisions at times, so it's interesting to think about that aspect of it. You drive by City Hall, and you see this big building sitting here, and then you don't know what's going on, and it's like every business you go into, you go into the business, and then you see a thousand people, you know, it's like all the ants running around, everybody's busy, and you would never know that there were that many people working inside of there, and that it's actually necessary. There was a comment made a few times about development, and the development in the city of Norwood, the development, and I think what you always need to put in front of when you're talking about that is RE, redevelopment, because we don't have a bunch of greenfield, we don't have pasture land out here, the back 40 is not sitting there, you know, because it was an alfalfa field last time. Everything we do is redevelopment. And even Mr. Lingefelter pointed out, you know, that property that they're trying to redevelop, to redevelop, has some hazards on it that have to be taken care of, which adds cost to developing, to redeveloping that land, much like the PLK property when they very first started with the playing card company, they had to do all that work. And with, even with, you know, the other buildings, it seems like every development has, in the city of Norwood, they dig down and find something else. You know, on Montgomery Road, we know we're getting ready to repave Montgomery Road. It's costing us, the city of Norwood, more money to repave Montgomery Road, because the asphalt crew won't just come in and grind everything up, they've got to use ground penetrating radar to find out where the streetcar tracks are that are still under there, so they can mill the street down and do the work that needs to be done, but it costs us more money. And then when we talk about our city, it's great, we have all these lovely, beautiful 100-year-old homes, and I know I mentioned it earlier, I love living in my 100-year-old home, but I'll tell you, it's a lot of work keeping a 100-year-old home up. We all know that, we're all living in them. I don't know any of you that have, well, maybe John has pretty much tore down his whole home and rebuilt it, but we all live in older homes, even older apartment buildings have their challenges, so those are, there was also the question of, you know, property that the city needs to look at the development and how we're developing property within the city. We're doing that on a regular basis within part of the administration. That's what Catherine Fitzgerald, which you've met many a times, comes in and talks about how she's working with people on these properties. We don't own property, we're not, we don't have 10 acres sitting here, we don't own the Perrin Derek, the old Perrin Derek site, you know, we don't own any of these properties. So we're trying to guide, control, we're trying to, we're begging them to redevelop this brownfield, to do something there, to improve our community, and we've got to keep that in perspective. And then the other part, we always talk about CRAs and TIFs, and you guys just passed legislation to remove, you revoked the TRA, or the TIF, right, the CRA, excuse me, you guys took that off, you took that from somebody. Now, like you said, they're not going to meet it, but the thing is, I wanted to point out, there's administration to these things, the CRA and the TIFs. You know, there was callbacks, there are some callbacks put in place, and we've seen some pretty positive, because previous councils worked on putting callbacks in on some of these agreements, and we're watching them, and we're monitoring them, and we're doing it right. But it takes a lot of time and effort, and there are people that are engaged in doing these things on a regular basis. It's hard for the regular community member to understand that. You guys, even as new council members or long-term council members, every time, every time I come to a council meeting, it seems like I learn something, a little something different is going on that's like, and I've been doing this for a few years, and I sat in your seats for a few years, but you're always learning. I'm sure Vice Mayor would say the same thing, he's constantly learning. But it's, we've got a great group of people working with the city, they're doing their best for the community, and there are a lot of meetings, as council members, I remember, I had, we had so many meetings, every, seems like it was constant meetings, and that's the same for, you know, the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals and all those, there's a lot going on here all the time, so I appreciate all the work that you're doing and making some tough decisions, and I'll make tough decisions too, and we'll just continue making the city better as we move forward, so, thank you. If you have any more.
Thank you. Any questions for Mayor Schneider? All right. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Awesome. So, I just was going to quickly summarize my letter so that you all can receive and file it for Brett when we get to that point. But anyways, I just gave you all a earnings tax report that has the first eight months of the year, and I was just going to summarize that based on the bullet points I already put in there. Overall, the city's up 6.4% in earnings tax collection from last year. Individuals up 11.6%, and a lot of that is factor 52 residents, and then the resident postcard impact that we've sent down, so. And just to note on that too, so PLK, they submit tenant list to us on a quarterly basis as kind of required by our law, and they, they're extremely diligent at doing it, more than almost any, it's a few people that do it pretty regularly, but more than almost anybody else, and that helps aid us in collection. So, you know, any new tenants that, any new people that move into whatever new development there is, whether it's south of Robertson, north of Robertson, or what have you, it's going to aid the city, and we're going to be getting earnings taxes from them, especially, you know, people that work from home that don't work in another municipality, we're going to get 100% of those earnings taxes, and there's some pretty big earners there. The corporate net profit tax this year collection's up 23.4% from last year. This one's really volatile, I talked about before about it, it's very volatile in general, that one will, there's necdomic downturn, that's also going to drop relatively fast as well, just depending on how the businesses that are in Norwood do. And that's another one where we get, you know, we get a corporate profit tax from apartment owners, like apartment owners have to file returns as well, so we get profit tax from that. Last one, employer withholdings is only up 1%, but still, I guess it's up. So, we're excited there, I think next year we're going to see it increase even more, because PLK's corporate headquarters are going to be here, and there's going to be some pretty high-paying jobs, and that's PLK a lot, but just want to make sure, no, there's some pretty high-paying jobs there. We'll never be able to really release exactly how much that we get from them, like once they do move here, but just know that, like, it's a significant investment, and especially when they are moving from a place that has a 0% earnings tax now, they're going to be coming and paying a 2% earnings tax in the future. So, all that to say is, no matter what happens in the future at the site, I just would, you know, encourage you all to continue to work and try to find, if we can figure out what that middle ground is, I think that would be great, because between the residents and PLK, because they are an important partner for the city, in the same way that 10 years ago, 15 years ago, Paycor was an important partner for the city too at that point, so. But yeah, anyways, I appreciate it, that's all I have. If you have any questions, let me know, but definitely don't read the whole letter. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Bonzal? All right. Mr. Moore.
Does anybody have any questions? I'm not going to add.
All right. Then we will move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Mrs. Hoover.
I have a couple. Any chance I could get video?
Yeah, I don't.
The reason why I like doing this is folks at home can see the QR codes and see the information, folks really like that. I'm going to be quick. We're still doing our community survey, we have almost 1,000, we're like at 953, I think. There was a great idea from a resident about having them in the yards, and we've had some really great process with progress with that. I think we need to do another outreach to the schools and the businesses. We've not gotten good feedback from that, or, you know, substantial feedback, so want to do that. So, if you haven't already taken the survey, please take it. If you have, please share it with your friends. The next thing I wanted to share is that Xavier students are back in full swing. I stay in pretty close contact with the, with folks at Xavier, the dean of students, as well as Xavier police. In the last couple of years, the Xavier police and Norwood police have done a really great job of working more collaboratively, and last, maybe it was two weeks ago, Xavier handed out over 130 packets of information on how to be a good neighbor. And so, this is some of the information. This is from '23, but it's similar, what they sent out this year. So, I would encourage folks to say hello to your, to your student neighbors, or if you're a Xavier student, say hello to your, your longer-term resident, and if you have questions or concerns, there, we do have information on the city website about that.
Did they get approval for that logo?
Yes, they did. That was two years ago. They, they, well, and they did.
That was grandfathered.
Because I worked, the mayor was involved with that as well. And then, this has been really exciting. Folks know that I'm all about recycling. I've been working with Carolyn from the Board of Health, and very excited that as of this past week, we now have electronics recycling here in Norwood. There is a bin at the back of the Board of Health, so it's 24/7. There is a camera on it, so don't dump your garbage, because we don't want it, and we will find you. I know that Mr. Powers is interested if you have an old tube television, don't donate it there, but bring it to his office, I guess, perhaps, maybe? So, already, before we've even advertised, we already have brought in over 21 pounds of electronic waste. So, this is a really great thing, very excited about it. The other thing that's happening is the community composting hub has been greenlighted, so thank you very much for the folks that were a part of that. We're going to be looking at doing a community compost, or we're planning on doing a community compost at Lower Millcrest in conjunction with Queen City Composting. It will be secured, there will be cameras on it. We're planning a three-year pilot project where it will be free to Norwood residents, and actually, I just got in contact with someone from Hamilton County that wants to see about even possibly making it bigger. So, that's going to be coming very soon. There's also going to be a mini recycling hub at the Board of Health. They just got greenlighted to move ahead with that. If anyone knows the Cincinnati Recycling Hub, that's where you can take your harder-to-recycle plastics, things like your clam shells that your spinach comes in, your Skyline Takeout, that harder plastic that you can't put in your bin or in your orange bag. No, they already actually allow for prescription bottles. We started that a couple of years ago. There is a separate bin there, I guess we can move it in there, where they were taking prescription, empty prescription bottles. If you have full prescription bottles, you can take those to the police department. They have a container there. So, we're going to be starting with some of this, of the very hard-to-recycle but easier-to-recycle stuff, or hard for us to recycle but easy for them to recycle, if that makes sense. So, that's going to be coming in the, in the near future. And then, the Free On Tire Drop Off, which we've been doing for years and years, will be the weekend of October 11/12. So, take a look at that. That is just for Norwood residents. We get a grant to do that. Tires have to be off the rim. There will be a flyer on the Board of Health website well before then, but those are some great opportunities coming up to make Norwood a little bit greener. And that is all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
Mrs. Hoover, like, have you been in touch with, like, local automotive businesses, or do they already have their own means of disposing the tires? Meaning, like, would it be helpful to recruit those sorts of businesses to participate in this, or do they likely have their own, all their methods?
That's a great question. I don't know. I can find out. I'll put it on my to-do list. Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this would be unfinished business, because we've talked about it before, but I know Mr. Miracle has mentioned, like, sort of the early motions of a 2026 budget coming to fruition, and I know in the infrastructure meeting the other day, Mr. Powers indicated that kind of the gears of planning for 2026 and some of those department head requests are starting, and so, I don't, I don't know the exact best way to do this, but I guess I just wanted to raise that flag with regards to if there are particular things that, you know, you're interested in as it pertains to budget line items for certain departments, et cetera, et cetera. It seems like now is the time to do that, and so, I just wanted to put that out there, because I know that some of us were talking about the other night, and just want to make sure everyone's on the radar if they've got pet, pet things they want to advocate for in the coming year.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mrs. Fransen.
Very briefly, want to mention the three community events that are coming up. We have the International Art Show, not this coming weekend, but the weekend after, that'll be at Victory Park in October. We will have the Historic Home Tour, which is always a treat. I love being a tour guide. It's like one of my favorite events to be at. You can have to buy tickets for that, sorry, but it's only like $10, $15. And, of course, the most important event, the 5K, November 1st. Please sign up or to volunteer. I can see whether you've signed up or not. That is, make of that what you will. Thank you.
You should have looked in the camera when you said that. Mr. Moore.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple quick mentions and then a follow-up item from tonight. First, just want to recognize the senior center and the good things happening down there. April Maloney is the director, and I had a chance recently to attend a lunch and kind of see firsthand her operation. Was amazed to learn that compared to last summer, which was the first summer of the center being opened, the swipes this summer are up 81%, and the particular lunch I attended, basically that whole, you know, bottom floor of the community center was full, and just a really amazing service to the community, this free lunch 55-plus every Thursday, and just wanted to recognize April for the good work that she's doing, and having been a little more immersed in that, that department recently. Second off, I wanted to just thank the Norwood Police Department. Had a chance to do a ride-along recently and really get the full kind of experience of what it's like to be an officer and drive around, and it was amazing even being with a supervisor, so not in the total thick of patrol duty, the couple of things that happened in the course of that five hours. Also, just want to send a shout-out to that particular officer, Sergeant Matt Betcher. This weekend is his 31st anniversary of becoming a police officer, 26 of which have been in Norwood, so he's seen a lot, and is just like a tremendous representative of the force, so hats off to Sergeant Betcher. The last thing would be with regard to tonight, and sort of the suggestion to maybe reevaluate or look at some of, like, the process and what, I just wanted to bring up the idea of, is that a, is that placed in a future committee of the whole? I could sort of see it being housing, I could see it being economic development, I'm not really sure the right place to place it, but I do think having additional conversations about kind of the big picture of how these things reach us would be, to me, seems like an appropriate committee item to work on.
Mrs. Fransen.
I agree. I think Committee of the Whole might be easiest. That way, we can all be there, and that way, it doesn't have to go to law, and then we have to hear from law and ordinance later. That's just my idea.
Sure. So, place it into the October.
We'll just place it into Committee of the Whole.
Yeah, thank you.
And the topic specifically?
How to engage residents and council members earlier in the PUD process.
Or maybe just planning process more broadly.